So that's always a possibility. Their area is quite good.
I'm gonna start the recording.
We're gonna call the meeting to order here. Welcome, everybody, to July 23rd, 2018, City Council Study Session. And we will begin with the roll call.
Jeff from Mayor Baggett.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember DeCorse.
Here.
Councilmember Holman.
Excuse.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Here.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Excuse.
Okay, well, we'll begin here. I think we have, we don't have any announcements, but we do have an agenda modification, right, Sean?
Yes, Chair. Item D has been a letter of support for King County Council Solid Waste Comprehensive Plan has been added as item.
D.
C is in dog.
Right. Okay, thank you. I think the first item of business here is the introduction of our new department directors.
Would you like us to stay here or come around here, it's fine?
Over there.
Nobody's gonna be able to see me over the television screen.
No short joke, Steve.
Okay, we're good. I'm Steve Gross, your new city attorney. I was previously here from 2006 through 2014, I think, 2008 through 2014. I've been practicing law for about 25 years, all in all, a combination of army experience, a couple of years as a JAG officer, then immediately into municipal law. I've been assistant city attorney for the city of Lynnwood, city of Seattle. I did policy work for the Pierce County Council as legislative council. And then I came here, out to Port Townsend to be city attorney, and then back here. You were kind enough to bring me back. They've been saying in the office that it meets the reduce, reuse, recycle theory here. I'm smaller than Dan, backing. Most of my experience has been all on the civil side, civil transactional stuff, general government work, contracting, human resources, franchises, those kinds of things. So that's it in a nutshell. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Lucky to have you back. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Anybody have any questions of our new city attorney?
No, just that you did leave when I got sworn in, when we got sworn in, yeah.
But now I'm back, so I still get to work with you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Good evening, Council. I am Candace Martinson. I'm the new HR Director for City of Auburn. And just a little bit about my background. I've worked in HR for 18 years, and 16 of those years I've been in government. So I came from Central Pierce Fire and Rescue, which is located in Pierce County. We had about 300 employees there, and I was their HR Director for six years, and previous to that I worked there as HR analyst. Really, we were very lean-staffed in HR. We had two HR people for 300 employees, so did a little bit of everything there: benefits, class and compensation, negotiations, employee relations, pretty much all aspects of HR, myself and the analyst handled. So it was a lot of work, and I was very excited to have the opportunity to come to the city and have a great staff that I've gotten to know over the last four weeks here. And they bring a wealth of knowledge and expertise, and just very excited to work with all of them. So just want to thank you for this opportunity, and it's a pleasure to meet all of you and to work for the city. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but if not, we can move on to the next.
We're working with you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. First quarter 2018 financial report.
Oh, no.
We have Chief Pearson as well.
Wild Bill. I usually refer that to Pelosi, but in this case.
Well, here I am again.
Welcome again.
Gosh, well, you know, maybe I haven't had a chance to sit down and talk to somebody about my background. Had a chance to know me over a lot of years, but I've been 28 years here in the city. Prior to that, I should say, I actually started in this career when I was 17 years old in 1983. I was a cadet over in Kitsap County. That's kind of where, November 24th, 1983, was the first day that I was associated with anything to do with law enforcement. And from that day forward, I've been hooked into this profession, and so worked there. As a kid, I did my college internship with the sheriff in the county over there. When I went to WSU, I actually studied government and social policy my entire four years there. And then I was fortunate to be hired here in early 1990s. So, like I say, Chief Lee actually did my background, and he was a brand-new sergeant at the time. So he and I kind of grew up through the agency, and so very, very happy to be the chief of police here, and can't thank you guys all enough, and especially Mayor Backus for selecting me and having the faith in me. And so I will always be available for all of you. You can call or got questions, I'm more than willing to answer those. So, any questions about me?
I have your number on speed dial. Is that a problem?
Okay.
Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, Chief, I just wanted to say, so sorry, I know that it's a neighboring city, but I suspect it impacts your department to see the tragedy that occurred in Kent yesterday. So just.
Well, thank you. You know, when things do happen in this region, especially the valley, there is always a connection because we work so close with our other agencies. We have task force and SWAT teams and civil disturbance teams, and we meet regularly with all the chiefs and all the command staffs. And so we're not, we're not as busy right now as Kent is in going through some of the things they are, but there is, there is a bleed over, most definitely. So this week, we've been spending the majority of our time helping them with handling some of their calls for service, to the point where even some of our records specialists will actually be going up there to work in their office in order to allow them some time away and prepare for the services. So we will have a big involvement in that as well, so condolences. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Mayor Backus.
I might, so we did have three key positions in our city that came with new individuals in those roles in a very short amount of time. And I wanted you to get a little bit of an introduction to each one of them, so you see why we decided that they were the right individuals to fill those roles. We also have an opening for an IT director, and so whenever we select a new IT director, we'll also have that person come in and provide a little bit of background. But the three individuals that you heard from briefly this evening are just impeccable candidates for the roles that we have put them in. I have no doubt that seamless transitions, you know, the people who left, we valued greatly and relied on heavily, and that will be the same case with Chief, with Candace, and with Steve, that we can rely on them very heavily, that they are experts in their field and will serve the city, the people of the city, very well. So just wanted you to know why we brought them forward, and that we'll continue to do that anytime we have a new director. Even if it's somebody that you know, we will, we will do that so that the public gets to see who that person is as well, and puts a face with the name and puts a face with the office.
Thank you. Okay, I apologize for leaving you out of that.
It's okay.
Okay, now we're ready for, I believe, the first quarter review of the financial report, 2018.
Good evening. I know that this first quarter report is a little bit tardy, but we've been busy with budget. We'll be more timely with the second quarter report. We just finished second quarter, and hopefully we'll have this here by the end of next month, with the first of September for the second quarter. First quarter's first quarter. There's not much trending going on yet. It looks, everything looks pretty good. Haven't seen, oh, boy. I gotta get down here on this little tiny. I can't even see the icons. Isn't it down here somewhere to make it the big, oh, here we go, maybe I can see it. Here it is, right here. Oh, okay.
Nicely done.
I can't see that one. I can see this one, though. Okay. This is, again, a graph that represents everything that you see on page two. And it shows the revenues and expenditures for the first quarter. You see red, that's not good. See the blue bar as an expenditure side, lower, higher, that's good. If you see it lower on the revenue side, that's good. So the blue is the budget, and the green is the actual. Property taxes, when we look at year-to-date, they're lagging year-to-date compared to last year, but as I was explaining to one of the council members earlier, you know, it's gonna happen. We're going to get those property taxes. It's that death and taxes thing, you know, but we will get those taxes, yeah. It's just that they're trailing a little bit from, compared to last year. And also in our development fees and services, we're running about 30% of budget. And at mid, actually, mid-year, I looked at this again, it's mid-year, 630, and we're running, at that point, we're running 30% of budget. We'd expect to be 50% of budget on those revenues, but we're 30%. But with projects, there's many out there in the line, and it's a timing thing when they come in. We were down last year from previous years. One of the council members asked me if, you know, we took into consideration sales tax for some of this construction that's going to happen over on this other block. We, unless it's really large, we tend not to, because as new projects come on, old ones kind of slough off. So we look at it in kind of a gross, through a gross lens. One thing I would like to point out is our telephone utility tax continues to decrease, and we expect to see that continue to decline. The budget this year is about 1.4 million. 10 years ago, that was a $2 million budget, but as we have fewer and fewer landlines and activity, it's just going to decrease. Another one that I wanted to point out was down on the expenditure side under municipal court in probation. It looks like that we're way underspending. We have a $2.6 million budget there, but we've only spent a little bit of it. The bulk of that budget's our King County District Court payment, and that won't be made until about August or September. We haven't even received the invoice yet for, and it'll be for last year's activity. So when that goes, it's going to go really quick. And that's probably 1.7, 1.8 million that we have budgeted in there for that. We also have, in there, we have the public defender budget. So that's pretty much what makes up that, that particular line item. Were there any questions on this?
Any questions?
Before we get into our graphs. This is another way to look at it. You see, our expenditures are less than our budget, and our revenues are greater than our budget. Again, this is the first quarter, and there could be, everything's not real smooth yet. Property taxes, this is the timeline on our property taxes over the last five years. You can see, down here, we're, we're tracking. Now, if I look at this at 630, we're going to be up here. And then we'll go flat again, and then October will come in, the balance of them. This is the sales tax net of revenue on construction. As a reminder, as we've been talking about, we've all talked about it, that sales tax on construction has been going over to the local street program. And so we're only seeing a component of sales tax here that's retained in the general fund. And you can see that there's a little bit of white here. We're up a bit. We're actually, the sales tax through July that we've received for the general fund portion, we're up about 6%, and several hundred thousand dollars over, over last year. So that's good. After we've had a 1 and a 1.5 percent increase, or 1.5 and 2% increase over the last two years, this, this is hopeful. And the activity is coming in. We have a new car dealership in town that is doing pretty well. I need to research that a little bit, and it's not the one that changed ownership last year, it's a different one. And also, in our services, administration and services area, we've had a kind of a bump there. And it's, when I go through it, it's mostly, I'm seeing landscaping companies and, you know, that weren't there before. So it's landscaping services, those type of things. And also, in our, our entertainment, which is our hotels, our motels, and our restaurants, we've seen a increase in overall revenue amongst pretty much all the restaurants. There's kind of an uptick, so more people are dining out in the first quarter of 2018. And this is the sales tax on construction transfer. This is the money that goes into the local street fund. And this one is trailing last year. We're down a little bit from last year. We're negative so far at the first quarter. And actually, if that trend continues on into the July report that I just received today. Utility tax. We're right, one thing I want to make a note about utility tax, you can see that it's, it kind of trends the budget last year's. We don't see a lot of growth in these items. They pretty much, they're pretty, you know, we might get one, 1.5% increase on these revenues a year, some maybe a little bit more, but some are going up, some are going down. And on page 13.
Councilmember Pelosi has a question.
Okay.
Page, excuse me, page 13. The bar graph at the top. I've talked about this in previous reviews years ago, and this chart kind of reminded me of it, and that is, on the utilities, could we add the tax percent rate in there, somewhere? As an example, electric, if we could add in the electric and then maybe put in friends, what is the percentage of tax?
Okay, we can add that.
What is it?
Oh, what are they? On the city, inter-fund utility taxes, it's 7%.
Okay, yeah.
And 1% of that goes to your arterial street preservation fund?
Yeah, and you explain that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And 6% stays in the general fund. Electric is 6, natural gas is 6%, telephone is 6%, solid waste is 7%, yeah.
If you could show what it is, and then what is the max?
Okay.
Maximum, so that, that way we know.
Well, I, we're at the max on all of them, except for the city-owned utilities, which there is no max.
Well, maybe you could then put that.
And I don't want to put 100% in.
Maybe you could put that in the narrative, then, as the max.
Okay, there's, there's no, no max. There's no, but everybody else is at their max.
Okay, thank you.
Cable franchise, it's pretty steady. Cable utility tax.
Now. Councilmember Pelosi. Back to that chart, the utility taxed by type.
Yeah, it's not on that chart.
Should it be on that chart, the cable?
You could add it there.
I mean, if we're gonna cover all utilities.
Yeah, I agree. It should be on there.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
And it's not. And we should probably, well, the franchise should be added, maybe below the utility.
Just so we have a full picture.
Make sure why it's not on there. But we'll get it on there.
I'm sorry. Mayor Backus.
I believe the reason the cable utility tax has been split out, and personally think it should continue to be, is because that was the new revenue stream for the six police officers. And so I, I think it makes sense to keep it separated.
Keep what separate, Mayor?
The cable utility tax, that was, that was put in place for the, to pay for the six police officers. That's a dedicated funding stream. And I think it would make more sense to keep that one separate from the other utility taxes. Because that's a dedicated revenue stream.
You know, in, in, looking at page 15, and looking at the first paragraph up there, cable utility tax, there's nothing in there that says that part of that's going to the police department for FTEs. I mean, if that's the case, then we should add something in there. I'm just trying to get some transparency here.
We do show it differently. Like, we don't show an individual chart like we do for cable franchise, or cable utility tax like we do on the other utilities. We don't, we show them aggregate. And I, this was split out, as the mayor said, to show what we're doing with the cable tax. But, you know, I can, I can, adding it to this chart probably wouldn't.
I, I think what, what Bill was just stating is, in the cable utility tax narrative, just identifying that that's being utilized for dedicating.
And the purpose.
Councilmember Trump Manuel.
You know, I have to agree with Bill because we were talking about that earlier, about the six hires and stuff. And now until Mayor explained where we got the fundings from, you know, I, I remember us voting that in, you know, agreeing to take that 3%, I believe it was, 6% increase to.
Well, it was a 5% increase up to 6%.
But it would be nice, like Mr. Pelosi said, to have it somewhere stating where, you know, that funding is going to.
I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
Business licenses. This isn't a large revenue stream for the city. This is mainly to be the database of our licenses. And these tend to be up and down from timing-wise, and it will receive more. We'll be up closer to our budget. I think the budget amount's about 220, yeah.
Councilmember Pelosi has a question. Regarding the business licenses, we're going gangbusters, thanks to the, to the staff that pushes that and, and tracks the business licenses in the community. So it's really improved significantly. I had, I do have a question about 2017 business license fees. Only 56% were collected?
No.
Well, and only 50% of total 2017 business license fees were paid, oh, paid in the first quarter?
We bill, right, well, yeah. We bill in December, like, end of November, first of December, and some people pay right away, and some people then pay, like, so some of the revenues, like, not in this particular case, they must have billed a little bit later. But sometimes you'll see revenues high in the previous month. It tends to, you know, it depends on what time, when they pay. Now, this year, when we bill, if they get their money, if they pay for their license quickly, then we could see a spike up. If not, and they wait, it'll, it'll carry over. But it has to do with the timing. When they send that billing out, it's around the first of December, and sometimes we'll see a rush of them in December versus in January. And, you know, it's the timing of the billing.
Thank you.
Permits, we talked about building and development fee services, and you can see that our 2018 budget is higher than our 2017 actual, that's last year. And this year, we're a little bit below our 2017 year-to-date actual. So we'll watch that and see, that's one of those cyclical revenues that we have to, you know, it's, depends on where we're at in project. Intergovernmental revenues, grants, entitlements, and services. These are also our state shared revenues.
Councilmember Pelosi. On page 18, in the, in the chart itself, inside the revenue column, fourth item down, Muckleshoot Casino Services.
Uh-huh.
What is, what does the 200?
27.
27 or 228,000 dollars, what kind of services?
Well, we have a compact agreement with the tribe, and we, for the casino and the impact of the casino on public safety, transportation, public safety in the city, which is mostly police and a little bit of transportation. And every year, we go up and meet with them, and they, we tell them what their impact is, and they tell us how much they have available from the casino to offset those. And that is the first quarter payment for 2018.
So is that the negotiated price, the 228,000?
Yes. I don't know if it's negotiated, but kind of, yeah. We have a meeting, we go up, we show them.
Obviously, if it was audited, it would show the line item expenses?
We have that, yes. We have to present that. They want a lot of detail around that, and we provide that.
And then marijuana revenues, $100,000, that popped up from?
Yeah, that's a.
$100,000?
That was kind of a distribution, oh, there's something around that. They had a distribution, they were holding some money. I'll get some more information on that, but there was, I can't quite remember what that was about, where there was a lump sum.
I don't, I don't need any more information on that, but I'm just, I was overwhelmed at the going from 10,000 to 100,000.
There was something.
Good.
And it's, it's eluding me.
Was it a state hiccup?
It was, well, yeah, it all comes from the state. And it has to do with the activity. And, I'm sorry, I just can't remember. Yeah. But there was something.
18 for quarter two. Might be some information in there.
I think it was kind of a one-time, a catch-up payment, yeah, when they did some reconciliation.
Either they're losing their grip at the state level.
No, I think they had some reconciliation, they did, and it increased the distribution.
We've been complaining about that enough.
Yeah, yeah, well.
None alone.
I'll look into that, because now I'm piqued by curiosity. Let's see, charges for services. Most of this is our parks, our culture and recreation, which is our senior center, our activities, the programs, the parks programs. Another large piece of this is public safety, and that's a pass-through. That's our guild activity, our guild contract revenue. We pay the guild, the officers, and they're doing guild work. And then we bill the business, and we just want to offset the cost of paying the police officer for their extra duty.
Councilmember Trump.
Are those, when they work at the police department and over at David's, they work around at certain businesses in our city?
There's a contract, yes. There'll be a contract, and with the business and the city, and then we'll have guild officers, the casino officers, the officers you see at the casino, they're doing guild work. That could be, there might be construction going on somewhere, and a contractor wants a police officer there. That, that would be guild work.
Thank you. Thank you.
Would that also apply to the muck, uh, the, like Fred Meyer?
Yes. That's guild work. We have several contracts.
I'm sure. Thank you.
Development service fees, those tend to follow the permitting, oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Pelosi.
I'm looking at page nineteen.
Yes.
Charges for services. Do we receive our total costs?
Yes.
Against all services?
Against all services? Or against the public, you're talking about the public safety or just all of these?
All of them.
I would say no, not against the culture and recreation or the development services. Uh, general government, that's.
What, uh, what falls into development services? What projects?
Well, those are going to be plan review fees, what, um, like what we're looking at right here. Development services.
Yeah, yeah.
That's plan review.
So what are the different programs under, is that all of these then? Government, uh, general government, public safety?
The one, this is everything. This is all your charges for services here. This chart. And then this chart is just the development service fees. It's plan review.
What, what are development services?
Um, well, we had that, we've had that study. We had, uh, FCS come out and talk to you about that a couple of months ago. It's our development services and fees that we collect. We have, um, a litany of fees and services that we collect for development and also for community development. But it's basically plan review, um, and maybe some environmental review on a project. And then when they get through their plan review and all those things, then they'll submit for the building permit. And then here's culture and recreation. I'm picking up a little bit for the first quarter.
Councilmember Pelosi.
On culture and recreation, um, I'm looking at twenty-one, page twenty-one.
Yes.
I'm looking at the top paragraph. I'm looking at the last line that says, "The majority of culture and recreation revenues are derived from greens fees and pro-shop sales." I don't see anything in here on the restaurant, Bogey's Restaurant.
That, we would collect that. That would not be a culture and rec, or recreation fee. It would come in through our rent releases. We have a whole different area, rents and leases.
So how are we doing with the golf course on greens fees and cart rentals and pro-shop sales? How are we doing on that?
Well, we are doing, when you say how are we doing?
Well, budget-wise.
Budget-wise, I'd have, well, greens fees first quarter will not be, they'll be seasonal. They won't be like twenty-five percent of the revenue because it's a seasonal revenue. But it's, you know, we haven't broken it out. We look at it as the whole year. That would be something we'd have to do, to do a special study on that. And say, how are we doing at each? But, uh, they're pretty steady from year to year. They're not, we're not.
The golf course is a pretty major capital, and I was just wondering how we are doing out there.
Okay, well, we can get that information. I don't have it here with me today.
As you can see, during the first quarter, the majority of those are derived from greens fees and pro-shop sales, recreational classes, athletic league fees, and special events. It's not just the golf course and pro-shop sales. It's, it's all of those things. So.
I know that.
So as you can see, through the end of the first quarter, we were slightly up. And I would imagine you'll notice in the second quarter, when we get those, that there will be an increase as well. Because the weather has been quite good out at the golf course for the last quarter. So you'll see an increase, perhaps even above what the budgeted expectations are.
I just think it's, it would be a nice snapshot to see how the golf course is doing against its budget.
And I haven't looked at that, so I can't.
We haven't talked about it since it was folded into the Parks Department. But I think it would be, it's a, it's a huge, huge.
Okay.
So we'll see what we can do. There's, there's no promises at this point, but we'll see what we can do.
Well, we do, oh, I can't, I kept thinking it's in the general fund. I was gonna say, oh, we can go back. It's not any longer. And there's two sides to that. There's not just the revenue, there's the expense. And we, you know, everything, the, well, obviously, everything's general fund. We pay everything out of the general fund. And culture and recreation, just in general, tends to be a little bit seasonal also. Most of our programs are in the summer for the kids, the camps and things like that. And you have league fees. In the first quarters, there's not a lot going on. But as the weather gets better, we have more. Fines and penalties, um, they're pretty consistent. We are actually up over our budget year-to-date and a little bit over last year. It seems to be, oh, it's an interest and invest, oh, I'm, I'm down on the chart below. I'm sorry. I'm looking at something else. Fines and penalties are pretty consistent. We'll probably come into close to nine hundred thousand this year, like half the last couple of years, last three years, actually. Miscellaneous revenues. On the bottom of page twenty-three, the chart that we have there, you can see our interest and investments. The interest rate is marching up. And so are our revenues, finally, in that area. Under rents and leases, that's where you would see the revenue from the concessionaire out of the golf course clubhouse. And they are up, our rents and leases. And I, I think a lot of that is attributed to probably the new community center. And real estate excise tax revenue. We are, at the first quarter, we're about, this is both, uh, real estate excise tax, part one and part two. We have budgeted two point four million in the real estate excise tax one and two this year. So we're trending a little bit. Had last year, we were receiving more, but we're trending a little bit above budget. We're in between budget and what we received last year. And that, you never know. You could have a big sale and you get a big windfall of excise tax. Here's another favorite chart, the pet licensing revenue chart. Now, before anybody says anything, with this, it was this first quarter is when we're having the transition. And so we're going from Pet Data to the Humane Society. I guarantee you that second quarter more than makes up for this. I've seen some numbers, and I think that you'll be, we haven't grafted it out yet, but I think you'll be very pleased. So before everybody gets too excited on that.
Councilmember Pelosi.
I agree with you.
Okay. Oops. Okay. And the revenue is going to look better, too. Okay, now we're getting into our street funds. This is the arterial street preservation fund in the graph. Again, now, this does not include BA number one, two, three, four, five. BA number five, which had all the carry forward, carry forward funds in it, because that didn't pass till April. So you will see in the next budget amendment, or in the next quarterly report, you will see the budget amendment reflected in that we did. So it looks like the budget's really low. It's like annual budget of two and a half million compared to, say, what we spent last year. And then our budget's way down here, but we have some carry forward that you'll see in the next one.
Councilmember Trout, may you?
I have a question. And this just came up to my mind when, um, when we're dealing with the pet licensing. Is there any way that they have a data on how many animals have been put to sleep? And that's also a way of our revenue going down, 'cause you're not buying license. Like, my dog, I just had to put him to sleep. And I received my notice saying that it's due for me to buy my license. And I haven't called or, or written a letter. Is there any way that, they keep a data of that?
Well, they keep data of, of refunds or licenses. And I, I don't even know if they're doing refunds. I'd have to, to look. Some do, some don't. I think that we did. I don't know what the Humane Society is doing. But we don't.
Well, I'm not talking about refunds.
You know, we keep track of maybe if someone turns an animal back in or gives an animal away, those types of things in our licensing database. But we have no way of knowing if an animal's been euthanized or whatever unless we're contacted.
Yeah, 'cause I was gonna call him up and let him know, uh, with the license, you know, bill back. Uh, and I'm telling him that my dog is no longer around. So I was just wondering if we have a data on, on something like that.
They, they do, I, I don't know if he keeps data on that. Then the local street fund. Then we have a large, we have a large, uh, 2018 budget. And I think those contracts, didn't those contracts go out this week? Yeah, for this, for the work on the local street, uh, projects. And this is the arterial street, the capital project fund, uh, one oh fund one oh five on page thirty-two. This is the arterial street preservation. We've had some large projects in there. And we anticipate them going. Some were held, held back, and they're going to go this year due to funding, which is San Regional Council. And, uh, where's the, okay, mitigation fees on page thirty-three. This is just a tracking of what our balances are. And the two big ones, of course, are the transportation impact fee and the park impact fee. We have, uh, and, uh, revenues expenditures, revenues are, revenues and the transportation impact fees are well below budget so far this year. And the park impact fees are well below the six hundred thousand budget also. So far, the, these are when we have the permits taken out or they get final occupancy, all these impact fees. And these tend to go with the building and the permitting activity, and we see that that's down a bit. We put in a budget, but really what we operate off is what the fund balance is. So, you know, making budget on that is nice, but if we don't, you know, that's not what we're funding projects with at the current year. We're funding off of our reserves and our fund balance. And as you can see, we have about five million in transportation and five point three in parks. Let's see. This is our water revenues, the water produced versus water sold. And these charts tend to follow each other. And we're right here this year. There are these dark lines, the dotted lines are last year. We're doing, we're doing well. We're covering our depreciation so far, so that's good. These are some, some of the charts that I had in here last time on solid waste. Everybody's interested in solid waste. See an idea of the tonnage collected, both from the residential waste stream, multi-family waste stream. We have also commercial waste stream and the total waste stream. And tonnage by, uh, then we have the bottom of page thirty-six, we also have the tonnage by customer type.
Councilmember Pelosi.
I will comment on solid waste. Regarding recycling, everybody probably got a postcard in the mail this past week about recycling blue containers. They're gonna start checking out what's in the recycling containers.
On a team.
And if, if they find contaminated product in those containers, they will give a notice to the residents. And then if they come back and check again in the future, and they find that there has been no improvement, they may just cut you off.
I hadn't, I hadn't heard that they're going to cut you off.
They might just cut you off.
Is that Waste Management?
Yeah.
I know we're doing an audit for educational purposes. We have a contract out. And we are doing an audit just to go out, look at it, and if we see a lot of cross-contamination, to, to do education and outreach. But we haven't been talking about cutting anybody off.
That's what the postcard said.
Okay, I, okay. And Waste Management sent that out?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll have to get a hold of that. That's news to me.
Haven't seen it.
I read through one, but I haven't read it.
Okay. And here's our cemetery. We're doing okay out there. The red line's above the purple line. That's what's important. The revenues are greater than the expenditures. That's kind of a double-edged thing, you know.
My chart says two, twenty seventeen.
Well, somebody didn't update that.
Yeah, the narrative.
Yeah, there's been a few in here that.
Yep.
The titles aren't. There's a new one I put in, or had staff put in, and this is purchase order versus P-card transactions. We've been using P-cards for quite some time now, uh, six years maybe. And as you can see, the purchase order is on its way out. And we also receive incentives when the purchase, it's kind of like a credit card that you get a rebate on. So, um, we received about twenty-one thousand dollars in rebate in twenty seventeen and about twenty thousand in twenty eighteen. But pretty much the only time we cut purchase orders any longer is for contracts, construction contracts, uh, something like that where we, we have a contract in place. But for everyday buying and purchasing, it's pretty much P-cards.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Now, the purchase order, uh, when we get a, uh, a reduced price because going to the state, is that, is that affected here at all?
No, that's something different. You're talking about, like, if we buy in the state contract.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that would be a contract that we enter into off the state contract.
No effect on this.
But this is the plastic that you carry. It has City of Auburn on it. And so, you know, doing the math on that, that comes out to be over eighty thousand dollars a year in those transactions. We've become a little more, oh, I guess that's the end of those. But on page thirty-nine, we've become a little more active in our investments. We're kind of inching back into the market and picking some things up. One of the things I'd like to point out here is the, on page thirty-nine, the third line, Opus Bank Public Interest Account. We have about ten million dollars in there. And we've had that in there for not quite a year. And you can see we have about fifty-nine thousand dollars in interest earned on it, it looks like. But that's running right now, at the end of March, is one point six eight percent. It'll be higher now. We're up closer to two percent. And that runs about ten basis points, which is one tenth of one percent over the state pool, which is the, the state, the state manages anybody's money. You stick it in there. A lot of people, a lot of cities and governments utilize the state pool, so they don't have to manage the investments. They give us ten, about ten, one tenth of a percent over with state pools given. They give us ten, about ten, one tenth of a percent over what the state pool's giving us. And we've picked up a few investments. And since this time, we've probably picked up three or four more. We're entering back into the market, the interest rates. There's enough spread, as we call it, in the interest rate to make it worth our while to, to purchase an investment. But when interest rates are around point three percent or thirty basis points, it didn't, you didn't make enough money to even do the accounting on them. So we just kind of stayed with state pool. But now that there's a spread there. And then page forty of one hundred and one is your sales tax results, what's going on in the first quarter. I think I talked about this a little bit in the services area, which is where we have our lodging as well as our food, accommodations and food services, where we've seen kind of a bump. And we talked about that as well as the professional and scientific tech. What I could see, that was landscaping companies. And as of today, it's up about eighty thousand over last year. This is first quarter, but what I looked at today. Those two sectors under services are up a total of about a hundred eighty-eight thousand. Well, the whole sector's up about a hundred eighty-eight thousand over last year. And it seems to be those two areas. And there might be a new restaurant that opened up recently that might be doing really well too. But I can't talk about that. And then page forty-one and forty-two are working capital sheets and they all look good. Oh, and the forty-three, this is, we have both our operating and our capital funds, those funds that have capital funds. And everything looks pretty good. I didn't see anything that popped out that, after this first quarter, that wasn't concerned to me.
Any questions?
Great job.
So I'll probably see it another six weeks or so and we'll talk about second quarter. So this will be really fresh in your mind.
Thank you, Shelley.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thanks, Shelley.
Item three C, I think we have the Auburn City Code, Chapter twelve point six four A, half-street improvement requirements.
So I did leave on your places before the meeting, a printout of this so that you can have it in front of you as well and on screen. So over the past couple of years, we've been talking about development regulation updates. And our half-street code is one of those items that we wanted to come back and talk to the council about, about potentially making some changes to our code related to when half-streets are triggered and required. So what does the code actually say? The code requires us through twelve sixty-four A, which you have a copy in your packet of the full code language, requires us to actually have property owners build the public improvements across the frontage of their properties when they are developing their properties. So that half-street typically includes the paved roadway, half of the road, sidewalks, concrete curb and gutters, the landscaping, dedication of the public right-of-way if it's needed, street lighting, storm drainage, any traffic control or safety devices. So that could be the striping, pavement markings, the signage, pedestrian safety or traffic calming that needs to go in with it. And conduit for our communication system of at least three inches in diameter. And then under a separate code, we actually have the additional potential for requiring undergrounding of aerial lines. Tonight, we're not going to talk about that one. That's going to be a future discussion because it's a separate code and separate triggers for that. But I wanted you to have a full picture of what could actually get triggered when somebody comes in to do a development. So under the half-street code, there are a couple of different scenarios where half-streets get triggered. And for our code, we actually have five triggers in there. For residential development of four units or less, so could be a one single-family home, two, three, if the improvements that they're planning to do exceed fifty percent of their county assessor's valuation of the existing property value, then half-street is triggered. So a vacant property that has no building on it is automatically going to trigger that requirement. If it has an existing building on it, then we're looking at what the value of that building is compared to the value of their improvements under what the King County Assessor's valuation is. For commercial development, similar type of requirements, except that it's when it triggers twenty-five percent of that property value. So you can imagine under a, a commercial property under the King County, Pierce County, county assessor's valuation, that twenty-five percent can get triggered pretty quickly. We also have if it's a new or additional residential, commercial or industrial unit, so if they're adding a new unit to the building, so whether that's an ADU onto a single-family home, or if that's a new tenant improvement within a commercial space that it wasn't a tenant improvement before, so it's adding another tenant to the building space, those would trigger the requirement. Brand-new stuff automatically triggers the requirement. We also have if they are installing five or more new parking stalls, triggers the requirement for half-street improvement. And then the last one is if they are building a new access point to the public street, that new access point can be a roadway, public or private, or a driveway. So if they're going to take access to the street, then we require them to do the half-street improvements.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
You mentioned that if a new tenant is into a commercial facility, so are there any provisions or limitations that would say it's this size of a lease space or is it all lease space?
It is basically, if you're, so if you have a single-tenant space and you divide it and create two tenant spaces out of it, that's adding a new unit. There is nothing else other than you've added a new unit to trigger that requirement in the way the code's currently written. Okay? So what does code give us some authority to do and how we interpret this? So the code currently allows the city engineer to determine what elements of the half-street are required. So this really applies when we have an existing road with existing improvements. So it might be a roadway where we have sidewalks, but we don't have street lighting. So the half-street requirement might just be that they have to put in street lighting. It might be that they need to do all of the improvements if it's an unimproved road. So that gives us some flexibility to make sure it fits the existing condition as well as what the city wants to do on that particular corridor as that corridor continues to develop out. It gives me some flexibility to grant a delay or a deferral for those half-street improvements for either some or all of them. And there's some requirements that go along with that. The one thing that I cannot defer is if there's required right-of-way, then they have to dedicate the right-of-way. City engineer can also consider a fee in lieu of payment. The way that that system works is basically the applicant pays for the improvements that have been identified that they're required to do, and then the city has to build them within a certain time period. So when we're talking about a street deferral, I mentioned that there's some considerations that we have to take into account for that. A deferral is only for ten years. That's all that, that's the maximum duration that state law allows us to defer. We have to look at whether it's in the best interest of the city. We have to look at what are the other improvements around the property? Continuity of the infrastructure, so what are we connecting to and does it make sense to complete those half-street improvements or not? Do we have any pending projects in the corridor that might impact it? So either projects that we're planning or other development projects that are being planned. We have to look at safety. Are we going to create a safety issue if we, if we don't have them build the half-street now? We look at the traffic volumes and patterns in the area. We also look at what's needed for storm drainage. And then we also talk with other departments as necessary for, for systems that they need to manage within the right-of-way.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes, can you tell me, Ingrid, what would be an example of the best interests of the city?
So that's a basic statement that's in the code, best interests of the city considering all of the other items that are there. So an example would be, so we have a single-family home that wants to go in an undeveloped area. There's no sidewalks or other infrastructure within miles of the residence. Does it make sense for us to require them to build fifty feet of sidewalk that doesn't connect to anything? So while we might want it ultimately, the best interests of the city at that time is for the property to develop as opposed to have it not develop because it has an additional burden of having to build that half-street that isn't going to help anybody. So fee-in lieu considerations, so that, so that you understand kind of what that fee-in lieu process is. So when we agree to a fee-in lieu, we actually have to agree to spend the money within five years. And the way that our code's currently written is that it needs to be spent on completing those actual improvements that the developer is required to build. Costs are based upon the city's construction costs for it, which can be anywhere from a hundred and twenty-five percent to a hundred and fifty percent higher than private industry for all the additional hoops and regulations that we have to go through. And the original intent of this code, if you read it, is that we're supposed to use it basically when we have a planned project for the roadway. So if we already have a planned project, this gives us a way to have the developer pay us to include their half-street in our project and do it all as one. In my time here, we've used this code exactly once, and that was a very unique situation in which they, there was a cost savings for them because the, what they're required to do required them to relocate private utilities that under our franchise requirements, when we go to do that half-street, we would not have to do. So that's the only time that that has made sense in our current development climate. Okay, so what are the issues that we face with development? So you've heard me mention it a couple of times, so a deferral of a single-family residential frontage improvements. So it places a pretty significant cost burden on that future owner because the city can call that half-street in anytime during that ten-year period. If things change and other improvements happen around it, we may be doing that call-in for that residential property and I'll spend the money to build that half-street improvement. Sometimes these are conveyed during property sales, sometimes they're not. So sometimes this is a shocking situation for that single-family homeowner. If we allow the deferrals, then we go forward with not having that infrastructure in place in residential areas. When it expires after the ten-year period, if we haven't called in and made them build it, then the city is basically taking on the burden of completing those improvements at some point in the future. And as you're all well aware, we don't have the funds for going and completing local residential street infrastructure to this extent. And it also requires some additional staff time for us to track and evaluate. So as we do projects, we do look at our deferral agreements to see if any of them need to be called in. We also look at that from a standpoint during development to see if we, if it makes sense, if we have enough of them on a corridor that at some point we should call them in because there's five or six properties that could partner together to do the half-street improvements that's needed. Fee-in lieu, mentioned it before, doesn't really save the developer any costs with the way that it's structured. And then it's a burden on us to actually get those improvements done within that set time period, which we have plenty of other high-priority projects to work on. So that's always an issue. Costs for developers, especially for the smaller the projects are, the higher the cost is for these half-street improvements to complete that improvement. Time impacts, when we require the half-street improvements, they have the time and cost of doing the civil plans for those public improvements. They need to hire a professional engineer and go through that process as well as a contractor in order to do the work. So it adds time to them being able to complete their project.
Councilmember DeCoursey.
So here on the time impacts, for the private developer to have to do the work, is there a time period in which they have to complete the work?
Most of the timing for completing the work is really being driven by them. So if they don't have the public improvements complete, we won't allow them to have final occupancy on the buildings. So that, from that standpoint, it's really more driven by them. The other issue mentioned earlier, so the county assessor valuation, it's very easy to start triggering that twenty-five percent and fifty percent triggers for the different situations, whether it's commercial or residential. We have other code where we have allowed developers to submit appraisals for determining that valuation. My concern with that is that's additional staff time to go through a review of those documents, making sure that we're consistently evaluating those and making sure that we're getting consistent documents from developers on what that valuation is. So that can add time and cost to our process. New access point, so this is mostly on small, single-family homes. Somebody wants to add a second driveway for their home. Right now, the way the code reads is that that can trigger half-street improvements if they're not built. So that can create a significant burden on a single-family homeowner who just wants a second driveway. Infill development increases again that financial burden on the small infill development. If we don't require it, the city takes on that burden. And there is an impact on accessory dwelling units. So that would be considered under our current code as a new dwelling unit, which automatically triggers the requirement for half-street on that development, which adds significant cost to doing that ADU, especially in an undeveloped area. So what do we want to do to potentially change this? And for tonight, I'm, I'm looking more like for concurrence on the ideas, and later we would bring back actual code revisions with more specifics. So what we are proposing is that we would keep the language about a new or additional residential or commercial or industrial unit to be created. We would keep the requirement for a new access point to be created, but we would want to clarify when this applies for additional driveways on existing developed property. So if all they're doing is adding a driveway and they're not doing any other improvement, then we would want to look at, are they generating any additional vehicle trips or pedestrian trips before we would require them to do a half-street? We also want to provide clear definition for everybody so that they understand whether it's a new public road, a new private road, or new driveway for a full development, that that can trigger the roadway improvements because we want to continue with roadway connectivity, circulation for those frontage improvements so that plaits that are coming in that develop that road connection and say, well, I'm doing my half-street on the road that I'm building. I don't need to do the frontage. Well, no, you need to do the frontage as well as the road that's in there. So an example of that would be, it goes up on the screen there. So they have a small road that they're required to build, but they also need to build that frontage along the main road that they're taking access to. Add some criteria, then existing single-family residents that adds uses that are already allowed per the current zoning code is exempt from the half-street improvement. So the intent here would be it would allow them to do the ADU. It would allow them to do a home-based business without triggering half-street improvements and allow us to get better utilization of those properties and meet some of our density requirements. Add criteria for a commercial or industrial addition that is based on a minimum increase in the percentage of the existing square footage of the building instead of the valuation. So we felt that this was a more adequate way of, of saying if you're going to add, maybe it's ten thousand square feet to your building, then there's definitely an impact to the roadway, to the traffic, to the areas around you versus if you're adding a hundred square feet, that may not be an impact. So this would be a better way than the valuation to actually address that impact. We'd like to add some criteria to address the change in use that increases that vehicular or pedestrian trip generation. Again, if they're doing something different at the building that generates more traffic, then they should be looking at what those improvements are, are that are required. We would like to clarify that if a, if it's wholly an interior or exterior remodel, that we wouldn't consider that creation of a new unit and that that would not necessarily trigger it, that would allow us to, to not look at that, again, that valuation of the building additions and give us a little bit better control of how we address that. Clarify that homes that are damaged by fire, as long as they're replaced within twelve months, that those would be exempt from half-street. Same is true if you have an existing single-family home and you demo it, you want to rebuild it, as long as you're doing it within twelve months, is exempt them from that half-street because you're not changing anything from what was there.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Ingrid, twelve months seems to be awful short.
That is what we provide in other areas of the code for similar situations. So we wanted to say, stay consistent with that situation.
To see if you had to demolish and then...
So the interpretation is that they need to be under construction with that final home, so have gotten the permits. I believe that's how we look at the, the ad hoc. So they wouldn't necessarily have it ready for occupancy at the end of the twelve months, but they'd have building permit issued. And then we propose to remove all of the property valuation criteria and remove the condition about the five parking stalls. We believe that that was intended to catch basically the additions on commercial development primarily, which I think we can cover better in a different way. And then continuing to work with our city attorney on the fee and lieu options and whether there's maybe a better way to write that code that might give it more sensibility.
Councilmember Troutman.
Does this code also cover like abandoned homes that are all boarded up? No? Okay. What code covers that?
For, for...
Abandoned, abandoned homes?
This is just for half-street.
This is just for half-street, yeah.
But I'm just asking, do we have a code that covers those? Because anyways, I'll talk to you about it in private, because I was just wondering.
Are we talking about code enforcement issues with abandoned homes?
Would that be, would that be covered under code enforcement?
Abandoned homes, if there are issues with overgrown landscaping, you know, grass above 12 inches tall, broken windows, anything that's abandoned that makes it look like it's blighted.
Graffiti.
Graffiti.
Councilmember Decorsy.
Go back on the tenant space. Just my opinion, I think looking at it from a standpoint of a portion of the building that's being improved for a new tenant space, so for example, we have a 10,000-square-foot building and somebody's leasing a space of at least like 500 square feet. You want to look at some provision that actually triggers what that, what that half-street improvement would be. So, you know, a small tenant coming in to an existing facility would necessarily have to put that at the level of a burden on the developer, the property owner, because they may wind up losing leases, I guess you might say, if we have something as too strict a criteria.
And I think some of that will depend upon what is that trip impact that happens from that particular business. It might be a small business, but maybe it's high-volume trip generation that happens. We wouldn't necessarily want to give everybody a break on that, so we can look at that and consider some of that.
Yeah, we'll roll the criteria of how we actually would review that and what those elements of criteria would be.
Any other questions on those? That was a lot of recommendations to go through really fast. Okay, so I just wanted to give you some examples of kind of what we see out there for half-streets just so you can kind of keep that in mind of what that, that looks like and how those improvements look when we have both improvements, not improvements on the other side, as well as improvements on the other side of the street. And this particular situation that we're going to have more frequently in the more recent annexation areas. So this is a location where, just prior to our annexation of the Lee Hill area, King County issued a building permit for a new home on this roadway. And their requirements at that time did not require half-street improvements for a single-family home. However, we have plaits on either side of that property that are building out, and at the end of it, that will be the only property that is not improved to the full width of the roadway. We do not have a deferral for it, so it's basically up to when the city wants to purchase the right-of-way from them and build that half-street. Otherwise, it will look like that for quite some time. So some policy questions for you guys and some direction for us going forward. First one is general concurrence with kind of where we're going with the criteria and the potential changes of the criteria.
Do we have general concurrence from the council?
And then the question on the deferrals that we have granted, especially those for single-family homes. So currently, state law allows it for 10 years. If we do grant those, are we wanting to call those in before the 10 years are up? Because again, if we let them expire, then we lose the ability to have that half-street done. The downside to calling those in is you may be calling them in on a single-family homeowner who's not expecting that and has a significant cost burden to go through and build that improvement.
Councilmember Brown. So I'm curious about the deferrals. How is that process, how does that process take place, the deferral itself?
So the defer, so it's an agreement, there's actually two agreements that they sign. One is for the deferral and one is for a no protest LID agreement. So they can still question the valuation in an LID, but they can't protest the formation of the LID. And basically, once we've gone through the code process of determining, does it meet all the considerations that we would need to, to allow and grant the deferral? Then we go through and we write up the deferral agreement with the specific information in there as to what they're required to build. We don't put evaluation on it because it's dependent upon what's the standards at the time that they actually go forward to building. And then we execute both documents and record both documents.
Councilmember Pelosi.
The second bullet, what is, that second sentence, what is the staff's recommendation?
So that's a difficult one. We have the, we want to see the roads complete, right, within the city? But at the same time, we're the ones that have to deal with the situation where they're not expecting it. And when you're dealing with a single-family homeowner, that, that can be very stressful for them, as well as for the staff, having to have those conversations and explain why they now need to do it. Keep in mind, at 10 years, things may not have changed as to why we said in the first place that they could defer it. Those, all those reasons may still be in place, so it's difficult to do. So I think that there's, there's some areas where, if it's commercial or otherwise, it makes more sense to call those in, but the individual, single-family homeowner, it's difficult. But then that burden comes back to the city of having to complete those half-street improvements at some point in the future with its own funds or looking at doing local improvement districts to do that, which are difficult to get done and difficult to show the assessed valuation.
Councilmember Decorsy.
So do we ever have any, do we have any periodic notifications within those 10-year periods so people are at least made aware of what may be coming?
We do not, because there's some significant, so it's recorded against the property, but if property changes hands, we don't necessarily get notified of that. So it requires some research for us to do that.
If property changes hands, the property owner who changes, who sells the property, that information will be known by the person or the individuals who purchased the property because it's a public record document.
It should be, yes.
Sometimes it may be not, right?
Known and understanding it, I think are two different things. So they might see it on there as a requirement and, and know that it's there, but they may not understand what it means from, if we call it in, how much cost are they going to need to do?
It seems like 10 years is, I mean, you lose your memory after a period of time. And like you say, you know, 10 years, people may not remember that this document exists or that they even signed it. So it is, it could be a shock, as we said, so maybe it's just some sort of possibility of periodic notification may be something we might want to look at.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Okay, Ingrid. We don't want to harm the resident. So what is the better way, to stay with the state for the 10 years? Or to do, or to call them in before they expire?
And if we have a reason to call them in, we will. So if we have a project going on, a development going on, we'll call them in. The issue is, is at the end of the 10 years, nothing's really happened that has triggered the need to call them in. Do we then call them in to get that half-street? Again, keep in mind that most of these that are granted, especially for single-family homes, is because there's no other infrastructure anywhere near them. And so you're still asking them to build that 50-feet-up sidewalk that connects to nothing.
Well, but don't we need to, need the state law incorporated in order for us to...
The state law limits it to a 10-year agreement period. So even if we were to write the agreement with no expiration date to it, it would still expire after 10 years because of how state law is written. And Steve can correct me if I'm wrong on that one.
The law's already on the books.
Yeah.
Councilmember Troutman.
I, I have to agree with Mr. Decorsy about if somebody was to sell that property and then they bought it and they're not aware of that law, you know, that there...
Beware.
Is going to be coming up, is there any way? So do they, there's no way of letting them know? Unless...
Well, there's, it's, it's in their recording and in their title documentation, so there is. But, so what you'll get from brokers that ask us questions is, "Well, what's the value of those improvements?" And the answer is, "Well, we don't know because it depends upon when you actually come forward to build them and what the requirements are at that time for those standards." So it could be five years from now, it could be next year. We can't give you what that estimated cost is. Plus, we can't give you what the estimated cost is for private development to do it versus the city to do it. So it's an unknown cost, and that's part of the difficulty of it. And to answer some of the questions that I've heard, so the next bullet in there is, is our current standards call for what we call complete streets? So that's addressing both vehicular and non-motorized traffic, so bikes and pedestrians within all of our streets. If that's still our desired policy for the city, then we should probably be calling these in. The downside is, is that it, it means that there's going to be situations where you're going to have homeowners that are not happy because they're having a call-in happen and nothing has necessarily changed around them.
Councilmember Decorsy.
I think, as you said, if you're looking to really improve it, there's nothing adjacent anywhere near that current structure, that residential structure, but we're requiring them to do a sidewalk or half-street or whatever. But we don't anticipate anything happening for years to come, perhaps. And I think there's an opportunity there to also kind of look at how we would change how we're, what the requirements are for that. For example, you know, maybe at some point in time, there's a residential development that'll come in adjacent to this, where all the property owners will have to share the cost of the half-street improvement, including the current property owner. And it may be more palatable for, you know, for that. So I think part of it is looking at, you know, I mean, we can't project and predict, but, you know, I guess they may be anticipating whether or not there's going to be some improvements done, you know, in that area that have some potential for development.
And one of the most typical complaints that I receive when we're out doing the picnics or other public meetings is, when are you going to do sidewalks? So, and the reality is, on local residential streets, not unless it's a small gap for us to fill.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes, Ingrid, is, are there programs to help residents that the difference may be between staying in their home and not being able to?
For, I mean, for low income, there might be through the HUD program, but I don't know that it would provide enough funding to do the type of improvements we're talking about here. So a typical single-family home, that frontage improvement could be $30,000, could be $50,000. Most of your HUD-type grants are $5,000 or less. They're usually not up in that, that number. And it's not so much that they wouldn't be able to stay in their home without these done. It's basically, we have to go through a process of calling it in and then enforcing it. And so worst-case scenario, we end up going and building it and then leaving the property.
Does the term "let the buyer beware" apply here? Or redefine print, right? Okay.
So the last bullet that's up there is what we've been mentioning through the whole thing is, is does the city want to accept the financial burden for those smaller infill-type developments, which are, are small development, big cost for that frontage improvement, by either not requiring them to do the improvement or, again, doing the deferral? But if it hasn't been called in in the 10 years, allowing that to expire because that's, again, that's a cost burden that we take on.
Any thoughts on that, Councilmember Pelosi?
Shouldn't the developer be responsible for that?
Developers should, but a lot of these are your single-family home. They just want to, they have a lot, they want to build their single-family home on the lot, so it's not necessarily a developer, it may be the owners of the property doing it. Another example is you have a business who just wants to add another small unit on the property to make better use of the property. Ultimately, the city benefits from getting infill development, but if we don't have the half-street improvements, eventually, we're going to have to build them. Or accept that they're not there and that they may not get built because there aren't funds.
Would there be any opportunity for a sharing, a cost sharing of any of these projects like that?
So the, the, I mean, sure, through a local improvement district, we could do that, but you still have to have funds for that cost share part of it and be able to show that the increase in value to the property is going to justify the assessed value.
How does council feel about all of these policy questions?
I think, I mean, the last one, I guess my stigma would be it depends. That's a tough one, because, you know, looking at the need of having those half-streets or whatever being done, it may be, got to do it, it's got to be done now.
Welcome to my world every day.
Well, that's it, so I, I think that one is one that I think we need to contemplate more the financial burden on the city could be a huge impact.
You bet.
But the impact on the property owners is, to them, just as huge, if not greater.
Greater.
So I think we really, that one, I think we really need to kind of have a much more detailed discussion on how we would address the financial burden on both sides of it.
I agree.
I would agree with that, too.
Three out of four isn't bad.
We still have two other councilmembers who need to weigh in.
Well, and the comments on this are really just to feed into what, what do we come back with as potential code revisions, which will take us some time to draft those up and take into account your feedback.
Do we have anything currently that is kind of urgent at this stage?
Development is happening all the time.
Councilmember Brown.
So for me, you know, if there were examples, recent examples of how the city has proceeded, perhaps some examples of where it was less difficult and maybe some where we saw a burden for citizens.
And on the, whether or not half-streets are required and going through the consideration for the deferrals, that's, that's fairly simple and straightforward to make those determinations. The issue is, is what do we do 10 years later when the agreement's about to expire? Do we actually call those in or not? And that's where we struggle, because if something, if it hasn't changed to trigger the call-in earlier, then is it appropriate for us to put that burden on them at that point back?
Councilmember Troutman.
How many of these are we talking about?
Probably do a dozen or more deferrals a year. Probably just, yeah, two dozen, yeah. It, it happens frequently, especially with the annexation of Lee Hill and West Hill where you have no improvements in the area for quite a ways.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Have we outreach to other communities, other municipalities?
So we have looked at what other codes for other cities are. And it's, I mean, it's kind of, what their triggers varies from every agency to every agency. So what we've kind of put together was looking at what are some of other, the other agencies doing and what makes sense for what we were trying to accomplish with the current code.
So we've exhausted that aspect?
So, yeah, we, I mean, again, we've, we've brought into the consideration here what other agencies are doing. Some of them do some, some slightly different things. And internally, we discussed some of those and what the staff time and effort would be to actually administer some of those. Those that were more time-consuming were not proposed here.
We have a new, a new data, um, 3D, which is the letter of support on the comprehensive solid waste management plan. Come, Shelley.
This should be really clear. King County Solid Waste Division has reached out to the city and all the... King County Solid Waste Division has reached out to the city and all their city partners looking for a letter of support that they can send with the draft Solid Waste Comprehensive Plan and EIS statement to their council for review and adoption. They've asked for the letter. They would like it by the thirtieth, which is a week from today, and so that's why we kind of rushed to put it on here. If you recall, we had a comment period last winter, and we talked about this. We had any changes or comments to the plan. They had an open comment period. Now they're ready to take it to the county council. They plan to take it to them next week on the thirtieth, or they, they're handing it out to them on Thursday, but they're going to have the first review of it on the thirtieth. That's why they'd like the letter. And once the county council reviews and passes it, it's going to come back to the cities then, again, hopefully late this year, to their approved plan, back to the cities with the final EIS to the cities for adoption. And what the city then will have a hundred-and-twenty-day period to adopt the plan. And then, when all the cities have adopted it, it'll then go mid-2019, it'll, the county and cities will submit the final plan and EIS to a college for final approvals, and they have forty-five days. This is a very lengthy process, just to get this plan adopted. And we've been working on it for a decade. So this is the letter of support that we are going to like to have the mayor sign and send to them.
Councilmember Pelosi.
Since I sit on this Solid Waste Committee, I know that the discussions that have been going on for the past year and a half have been very in-depth, and all of the cities that are sitting at the table have really gone in and reviewed this with a lot of seriousness. And I would like to make a recommendation, and that is, add as a CC, Pat McLaughlin. He's the director of the Solid Waste Division. And I'd like to suggest that you add our City of Auburn council members.
Any other questions from any other council members? As part of the meeting, we turn this over to our focus area chair, who is Councilmember Troutman, for the Health and Human Services discussion items.
And I am going to suggest we take a break.
Take a break.
Five-minute break, is that long enough? Okay. Thank you.
I can go do that. Good. Good, I'm glad to hear that. Typically are very well put together.
You did. I think if it's okay with you, then I will call the guy and see if he wants to do a conference call with Jeff, so I can give Jeff a little more information. I think we still want to ask for an opinion on the general applicability. That mandatory doesn't require us to.
Yeah, feel free to.
Send him a little email saying you've asked me to work with them.
Yeah, just CC me out so they don't try and. You're going to hang out up here with us or not? No, come on, Joey's just getting everything set up for you.
Ken's got a very simple one, about four lines long.
Did you want the homeless house presentation up? That was more of a reference.
So you have no objections.
I have no objections if it covers us.
It does. And it's in plain English. It's like, hi, this is private. If you're supposed to get it, please let us know.
We got mom's cat in our backyard.
Cool, great. There's one email I don't have to send you off.
Perfect, I like it.
Beautiful, beautiful animal. Joey's got some photographs.
When deer hunting with my dad up in Utah, this lady that, I don't know if you remember this mercury commercial years ago, where they had that cougar.
Oh, there you go.
Mm-hmm. Well, this lady.
We don't need to spend so much.
In the mountain, she was on. Behind this big yellow mountain. She had a lot of, you're the same way, coyotes. She'd get out there in the back, and she'd tell them this same baby, same coyote.
On the market, with asbestos.
She was describing it, I was like, can we just?
So you'd scratch this right out. I tell you, that was an experience, I mean, that sounded like a movie.
Oh, yeah.
I didn't know they did that.
I've heard that. It's a surprise audience, on my ass. I'm not sure who's doing it. Local hire, yeah.
It does kind of play into.
Okay, we're going to call the meeting back to order. And I will have our administrative director come and talk to us about affordable housing. Dana, headman.
Thank you, councilmember. Thank you for having us tonight. I have several guest speakers for you. Oh, gosh, and I'm in the middle.
If we're supposed to join you?
This shouldn't happen. Oh, my gosh. Who's going to run the PowerPoint? Who wants to do it?
Oh, I'm going to pass, so.
Okay. First of all, to talk about affordable housing, we have two expert speakers here for you from the Housing Development Consortium of Seattle and King County. I have Patience Malaba and Sarah Wamsley from the consortium, and they have a plethora of great information for you, so I will turn it over to you two.
Wonderful. Thank you, Dana, and thank you, council, for having us here today. It was lovely to actually hear some of what else is going on in the city and how much you have on your plate. So I know we've got about twenty minutes for our presentation, and I personally could talk about this subject for umpteen gazillion years. So pardon the brevity, I'm pleased to be here with my colleague, Patience, who I will turn it on over to.
Okay, thank you, Sarah, for the introduction, and thank you, councilmembers, for having us. I am Patience Malaba, is introduced, and I am the Advocacy Mobilization Manager at HTC. So just one fact about me, I am an immigrant from Zimbabwe in Southern Africa, and if at any point you do not understand what I'm saying, or if I'm moving too fast, I will not be offended if you ask for clarity or ask me to slow down. Okay? So just about the Housing Development Consortium, we are an association, a nonprofit of various cross-sector members that are really working to address the issues of affordable housing and homelessness across the county. Most of our members work to ensure that people have access to stable and affordable housing opportunities throughout the county. And moving on to really why we're here, I will give it back to Sarah to tell us, to tell you all why we're here today.
Thank you. So just briefly, we'll do a little bit of defining what we mean when we say affordable housing. It has sort of a legal and a practical definition. Understand a little bit about what our local housing need is here in South King County, with some data generously provided by Zillow and the Regional Affordable Housing Task Course that Councilmember Balducci and Kenmore Mayor David Baker convened. And lastly, we'll look at the crashiest crash course of tools for cities at the end.
Yeah. So what do we mean when we talk about affordable housing?
I, I'm sorry, I. Yes. Left off a slide. If you take away only two things from this presentation, we'd like it to be these two, and that is that nowhere in King County, and in fact, our country as a whole, have enough affordable housing, especially for homes of extremely low income. When we say that, we mean zero to thirty percent area median income. And the other thing is that every sector has a role to play. You'll see later on in this presentation that public and private firms have their unique specializations along the housing continuum, that they are really uniquely set up to serve. And we'll show you a little bit about where you, as a city, are best designed to serve.
Thank you, Sarah. So moving on to what do we mean when we call housing affordable? For a household, housing is affordable when it doesn't cost more than thirty percent of their income. And we know that for low-income and moderate-income households, it's really hard to keep this ratio or to meet that ratio. And so when we talk about affordability as community-minded development people, we try to put them in trenches, and these trenches include your over-eighty percent area median income folks, which are really, have their needs met by the market. The market really thrives much in that bracket of the people that are earning over-eighty percent area median income. And then you also have your fifty to eighty percent area median income people, who are also sometimes called the workforce hous, they are within the workforce housing bracket. So this is where we begin to use some tools to subsidize the housing and ensure that while these people are working, they are also able to afford housing within our cities as well. And then we also talk about the thirty to fifty percent area median income. And these are people who really should still have a source of income, but also get some subsidy help as well, in terms of whatever housing they have access to. And then you have the zero to thirty percent area median income, people who are often referred to as extremely low income. And every city in King County, including Auburn, has the greatest need for housing, really, being within that bracket of people. And you will realize that sometimes people refer to their extremely low income as the people that are on fixed income. They're included in that bracket, but we also have people that do not have any income at all. Really, this is a breakdown that really shows how it plays out in the different brackets, where you have some of our key community wage jobs still being in some of those brackets. You would take a look at the fourth one, where you have the four-person household under the eighty percent area median income. You have your accountants, you have your biologists. These are really high-paying wage jobs, but they are still within the brackets and still needing affordable housing in one way or another. And then you also have the people such as the teachers and the people that work as baristas still in that bracket of the fifty percent area median income in terms of the two-person households. So really, the need for housing is across the spectrum. It's not just about people earning a wage and being able to pay their rent. Sometimes it does not play that way in terms of our income access and our income levels.
Wrong area.
Wrong area. Okay. So moving on to talk about the levels of cost burden. You will see that here we're breaking down to the definition of what we mean by cost burden, and also what we mean by severely cost burdened. Because of the absence of housing, people, as I mentioned earlier, are spending more than thirty percent of their income. And at the same time, some people are also spending fifty percent of their income, and this is what we call the severely cost burdened. In King County, two-hundred-and-ninety-thousand households are actually cost burdened. And that means that's one in three households throughout King County being cost burdened. And in South King County, the number is much higher. You have a hundred-thousand, eight-hundred households cost burdened, and so that leaves us at thirty-eight percent of cost burden within South King County. And if you look at the breakdown of the cost burden and the severely cost burden, you realize that the need for affordable housing really falls in the lower-income bracket, where you have the highest number being twenty-eight thousand between the zero to thirty percent area median income. So really, the need falls back to the people that are lower-income. We realize that people that are within the zero to thirty percent area median income actually sometimes pay eighty to hundred percent of their income towards housing. So that really leaves them with limited income.
On that income, is that one person's income, or is that a two-person's income?
It's a household income.
Household.
No, total household income, wow, okay.
So really, when so many people are so cost burdened in our communities, it affects our local economies, it affects our health, it affects how much people can actually participate within their community as well. So it's important that we are really focusing on reducing those cost burdens from people. So if you look at the rental increase over the last five years, there has been a high increase in South King. increase in South King County, within the South King County cities. If you look at the deeper colors, you can try to locate Auburn somewhere in there, and you will see that really the increase has been much higher in South King County. We have had over 12.6% annual increase over the last five years, so that's really a very high number to consider in South King County, given that we have been the most affordable part of the region, but these prices really continue to go up. And if you look at the rents, specifically in Auburn, there has been an increase of over 34% in the last five years, which really results in serious consequences, people being pushed out of their housing or being pushed further out of South King County. And in terms of the median home value, you will see that Auburn has had a 15% increase since 2008. So you can ask the question of where are the low-to-medium-income people within that homeownership spectrum? So it really leaves a lot of people not having access to ownership of homes. So besides the whole rise of rents, we move on to look at the issue of population, right? If you look at South King County cities, which are within that blue bucket, we really are the largest subregion of the county, and that means a lot of people are being affected by these issues, and therefore, some positive policy change would really protect a lot of people. And that really leads us to the question of South King County cities really need to work together as well in terms of addressing issues of affordable housing and homelessness. So that leads us to the question of what a community is feeling, what a community is thinking. Really, the issue of homelessness and the issue of lack of affordable housing has been a key topic in most metro areas. If you look at that research, people categorize the issue of homelessness and the issue of lack of affordable housing as a key issue that needs to be tackled by the policy level and even within communities. And at this point, I will let Sarah take us through what you can do as the city of Auburn.
Thank you so much, Dana. All right, so you're seeing on this chart and probably hearing from your constituents a lot about this issue. Here is a very high-level look at some possible interventions for you. And on this slide, which I apologize because there's so much on it, working from top to bottom, you have some categories of types of housing, ranging from homeownership on the far right, the general span served by private or market rate development. In that middle chunk in orange, you have sort of workforce housing, and then at the far left, you have the deeper sub-cities. We've got bands of incomes, these are the trenches that Patience referred to earlier by AMI categories. And then in the thicker bar, you have actually the number of South King County households in 2016, caveat, that met, that fell into these categories. So you get an idea of where the sort of, how the landscape is. And in terms of possible interventions for you, we've divided them up into four buckets, certainly not exhaustive, but those are land use, preservation, tenant protections, and funding. So we'll go through those very quickly next. So our first bucket is your land use toolkit, and I tried to place on this spectrum a general indication of the target of where these tools work. So you heard in the last presentation a little bit about ADUs. Those don't necessarily come with an affordability requirement. In fact, I don't know of a situation where they do, but they tend to be something that's a little bit more accessible for folks and do provide income, especially for older adults that are looking to age in place. It can be a nice subsidy for them. So it's a nice tool to increase density without dramatically changing the way that a city looks and feels. Another tool, which you'll hear us talk about a lot at HDC, is inclusionary zoning. And this is something that can be incentive-based, or it can be required. But in any case, it is a tool in which the city grants a little bit of additional development capacity, and in exchange, the developer can opt-in to performing onsite, meaning that they include a certain percentage of affordable housing within their market rate development, or they may pay a fee in lieu to the city, which then would leverage that money to develop affordable housing elsewhere, usually by funding a nonprofit developer that would do it. There are advantages and disadvantages to either side, so it's really about calibrating the rates and proportions that work best for your city. We can talk more in the questions section. The multifamily tax exemption is a pretty commonly-used tool. Again, it's usually 20% to 25% of a development would need to be affordable, and it's best for the sort of 80% AMI, really the upper tier of that orange bar. And it's also just a 12-year exemption, so at the end of that exemption, really questionable as to whether those units remain affordable. And moving down into the blue categories, you have the tool of surplus land, which made a lot of noise in the state legislature of this section, so you might hear a lot more people talking about it now. But this is when cities, in the scenario where you are blessed with developable public land, can either reduce the sale price or donate to a nonprofit developer in the interest of public benefit. So that's a great way to get a really long-term, really low affordable housing development. Another tool, which is especially helpful for South King County, where you have some affordable housing stock that we would call naturally occurring, is in your preservation toolkit. Two things that I wanted to call out were acquisition funds. These can be local or regional. You might be familiar with housing authorities acquiring existing naturally occurring housing that would be in jeopardy of being sold and redeveloped, displacing all of the people living in it, and really coming at a high cost to a city that's trying to preserve affordable housing. So it's nice to have a little bit of money on hand to be able to do that, or a lot of bit of money, I suppose, but it is a good tool. Another is code-compliance loans. This can be used for single-family or multifamily to keep buildings up to code and keep the folks living in them for longer terms. Tenant protections. I remember it was just over a year ago that I sat in this room and was very happy to see you all pass Source of Income Discrimination Protections. Thank you for doing that. You helped lead the charge and motivate the state to extend those protections to everyone. So here I have a checklist for you, the next things you can leave the state on. Just to go through the list briefly, and you see they don't have arrows coming down from them, because really, anybody that's renting, no matter where they are on the spectrum, benefits from them. The first one is the Rental Agreement Regulation Ordinance, and it's a very long way of saying, if you're going to increase the rent more than 10%, you need to give more notice than just 20 days. We really feel that in a market with as narrow vacancy rates as we have, it's difficult enough to find an affordable unit, and to do it on 20 days is very, very difficult. So for those 0% to 30% AMI households, that has a realistic and too often outcome of them becoming homeless, and when they cannot afford first and last month's rent upfront, it's quite a barrier. So it's a big problem, and even just that longer window of time can be helpful in not entering that position. Another is the Just Cause Eviction Ordinance. This is a way of laying out the reasons why a person could be evicted. Lets both landlords and tenants know some clear ground rules, and prevents displacement for kind of arbitrary or economic reasons. Tenant Relocation Assistance Ordinances. A form of them is already state law. This is if a building is going to be condemned. The landlord is required to assist folks with some finances to help them relocate. Cities can expand the definition to meet other circumstances. And the final is a Rental Licensing Inspection Ordinance. Kent just passed a proactive version of this, which is very helpful for eliminating the sort of power dynamic that exists between landlords and tenants. Tiquilla's had one for some time and has found that it reduced their landlord tenant complaints. So it's a HDC-recommended tool, if I may plug it. And last is the funding bucket. You'll see multifamily tax exemption on here again, because it sort of meets the category as a foregoing revenue. But basically, two buckets under funding, and one is providing some kind of capital infusion, be that from a fee in lieu. For instance, if you were to have an inclusionary zoning and you had developers paying fees in lieu, that's a great way to fund affordable development. Counties or cities that have levies do a lot of funding, capital funding that way. You hear a lot about the East Side Housing Trust Fund, where cities will pay in out of their general fund and other tools. And also, impact fee waivers are good tools. As a preview, I put REIT up there. This is not an allowed expenditure for affordable housing at this time, but we've been fighting at the state for several years, in the hopes that we would be able to get some flexibility for cities in their REIT I and II funds, or possibly even the ability to enact a REIT III if they saw fit. So from our perspective, knock on wood, that we might be able to make that happen. That's a very basic, very high-level overview of some tools for affordable housing. If you have questions for us, we're happy to stay for a little bit.
Councilor DeCoursey.
First of all, Patience, I'm glad that you mentioned that the need for housing is across the spectrum, not just at certain income levels, because it's, we push that kind of statement all the time, especially with the state legislature. One of the comments and questions I have is you mentioned in our review, Sol, that the severely impacted people are those between the 0% and 30% median income. Those are also the people that rely upon the subsidized housing, such as public housing, Section 8, to get them places to live. You can't build any more public housing. It's not allowed unless you take an existing public housing property and convert it, and then take that existing public housing allocation and use that for another property. As you mentioned, buying other properties, you can turn on the public housing subsidy unit by unit once you do that. The biggest problem is, I mentioned this to Dana before and in this room before, King County Housing Authority, for example, has 3,306 units of public housing. That's it. That's a congressional allocation. They cannot add to that number. They can convert properties and allow properties to, again, have that subsidy transferred to another property, unit by unit, but they can't exceed the 3,306. So the issue I see here is that, you mentioned enticing, you mentioned the nonprofit developers looking at building on public land. How do we actually make it an incentive for them to do that? Because there's no more public housing, there's a limitation on Section 8 vouchers, the wait lists are years-long on both ends. Every time the Section 8 application list is open, you know, 25,000 people or more in King County apply for a possibility of being put on a waitlist for 2,500 vouchers that they could wait 10 years of war to get. So you guys work with us every day. I don't work in that field anymore. I gave it up when I retired three years ago, but I'm still actively, heavily involved in this whole affordable housing issue, and it's really a concern in how we get there. So I'm curious to hear more about your 0% to 30%, where we really do go, and how do we really meet that need?
Thank you for that, and thank you too for all your years of work in this field. I think every day that I spend in it, I learn just how much I don't know. It's complicated. And for a lot of the reasons that you brought up, but I would say that especially in this particular housing moment that we're in, of just uniquely high need and incredibly constrained resources, especially for meeting 0% to 30%, which the private market just cannot get down that low, it's really incumbent on cities, counties, the state, and the federal government to be creative and figure out what they can do. With cities, as much as you can find ways to inventory your public land, as a lot of state agencies are working harder to do, it makes a really big difference for developers to have that deep, deep subsidy. But even in the case that land is free and available and developable, that's the other piece, they need that capital to actually make it work. And the nice thing about, I think one of the tools that was up there are levy dollars, bond dollars that come from the counties and cities, are that they tend to be a little bit more flexible. They don't come with all of the same strings that federal funding does, so they're really critical towards filling the gap and getting as many units as you can. The other piece is that some of the tools that work for the private market can be layered, so you can get to some deeper levels of affordability, although perhaps not quite to that 0% to 30%, and perhaps not quite for as long of a time as we'd like to see. But MFTE and inclusionary zoning, we sometimes see layered together. I will say, in Redmond, in the Marymore sub-area where there is transit going in, they were able to get down to 50% AMI, which is pretty good for leveraging the amount of growth that they're expecting in that area. So my advice to you is, you know, where you do have some sticks, such as impact fees and things like that, if you see a value in waiving that for public benefit, it might be worth considering if that's worth your buck for that 0% to 30%. And don't be afraid to think outside the box a little bit in terms of how great our need is. So my long, my short answer to your question is, I don't know. Let's figure it out, yeah.
I would just make an addition, that it's really about the creativity, because even within the in lieu fee, there could be considerations foregoing 0% to 30%. So it's really about really playing out in terms of the policy, and what are the angles that we can ensure that we're subsidizing housing for.
Senator DeCoursey.
I think the other thing is, we all need to advocate for this. I recently met with Senator Meloche on this issue, because he's keenly interested in how this works, and the Hen Essential Needs Program, the Hen program, that provides a rent allowance for homeless individuals, does not allow individuals to rent a place to live. A single individual receives $1,000 a month. I challenge you to go throughout South King County to find a single, one-bedroom apartment, even a studio, that rents for $1,000 a month. So without some form of other financial assistance, especially those that have zero income, there is no opportunity for them to use their Hen program to get a place to live. And it increases homelessness naturally, it increases burden on families, but it's one where the state legislature, by allowing the Department of Commerce to become more creative, I guess you might say, the state legislature really needs to step up and change that program, and have that program work with current conditions. Just an example, here in Auburn, you know, we have a new, nice, beautiful development next to Fred Meyer, that because of the AMI, because it's allowable in King County, within a month after the place opened, the rent's increased $150 a month. And automatically, you have a whole list of people who no longer can rent a place there, because, you know, they don't make the $26 or $27 or $28 an hour as individuals, or in some cases even as multi-income households, to afford that even in Auburn. So I really think we all need to spend more time in the legislative advocacy like we've done in other issues here, including SOID, and make them well aware of the needs and what we need to do to change that program as well.
Thank you for mentioning that. And I just want to say too that last year there was a change to how Hen functions. They actually expanded how people qualify for it. It used to be that people would just stop trying to apply because it was way ominous to get qualifications. And now, in fact, have a waitlist. So we're hoping to get some supplemental funding for it. It's a really critical program. So thank you for.
Sarah, is there any way that we can get a copy of your?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah.
We'll make sure to send it to you.
You have a lot of information in there for us to be able to go back and review. So it'd be nice if you can get it to us.
And we're an email away.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any further questions? This is a really important topic, so thank you for coming and sharing this with us because you're right, a lot of people have been asking. And just like Mr. Decorse said, there has been some people coming up and saying, you know, I don't make that kind of money and I can't even afford a twelve hundred dollar a month apartment. So they're living out of their car, you know, or they're moving out of the area. So, yes, Mr. Decorse.
There's just a mayor backs as well on the program. She's working out with executive constine with Mayor Durkin, you know, serving the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. And I think it's important for Housing Development Consortium and others to start bringing their messages forward to the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. I've talked to the board chair about this on a few occasions and he welcomes this. Although there's a plethora of information that comes into the Affordable Housing Advisory Board, I think the individual organizations that work with this every day to come in and be more informative to the board gives us a better opportunity to bring it back to the governor because that's what we do. And allow the governor to have a better understanding of, you know, how significantly serious these issues are, although he does understand. But to be able to get more tools to work with, I think in this aspect is also very beneficial. So we need to keep in touch on that in that respect.
Absolutely. I have a meeting with Cindy coming up soon, so happy to talk to you anytime.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
Count us in, Ms. Dana.
Good evening. You can sit wherever you like. Hi, I have another guest with me. This is Danielle Winslow from All Home and they head up the one night count. Now, is this the second or third year?
Well, so the one night count is, or the count us in, point in time count, has always been under the continuum of care, but we had a change to the methodology in 2017. So I'll talk about that.
Okay. It's all yours.
Thank you. And it looks like you all have copies. I made some extras just in case. I'll leave them there in case it's useful. Thank you for having me this evening. Again, my name is Danielle. I work with All Home, which is the continuum of care for homeless services in King County. What that means, so one of the things when we apply for federal funding through housing and urban development, we do it through a joint process through the continuum of care that is All Home. Some of you may be familiar with the community's end homelessness in previous years. About three years ago now, we have had a new strategic plan called the All Home Strategic Plan that has really kind of outlined how we're going to work together as a region to make homelessness rare, brief, and one time. Hello, Mayor Backus, good to see you. I sit on the All Home coordinating board, so I know that you're familiar with this presentation. I do have a few slides to work through, but please, if you have any questions, I don't have too many slides, so I can certainly feel free to ask questions as we go along. The other thing I like to just really make clear at the beginning, there's so many people that were contributing to this process. And so I'm going to do my very best to answer all of your questions, but if for some reason I don't have an answer, I'll be sure to follow up with you or your staff after tonight. All right. So with that, I wanted to just start off by saying that one of the components of the continuum of care is to do an annual count around the number of people who are experiencing homelessness. So there's, I'll talk about the different components of the count, but one of the pieces with this is that it is a point in time count, which helps us get a lot of information to see trend data and to get a better analysis of what's going on within our region. However, it is one piece of data, right? Just like all different things, we think really critically about it. How does it help amplify just our understanding around homelessness? But what kinds of other questions or in other sources do we also need to ask to help build out that story? And so I'm going to be sharing actually a couple of different pieces too to kind of help build out that story. But again, just really indicating the usefulness that this is, to be able to see from year to year, kind of working from the same space of how are we addressing homelessness? Where are those places that we can really pick up that are going well? And how do we replicate those? And where are there those trouble areas that continue to require additional attention? So with that, I wanted to start off by just sharing some of the core components of this. I know many of you are familiar as volunteers of the count, so thank you for that. There is a general street count, which is kind of, I think, the main thing people really grab on to and see within the media and kind of rally around. This last year, we had over a thousand folks throughout all of King County volunteer to help us with the account. And that's where we went out in the middle of the night at 2:00 a.m., out of different deployment sites throughout King County, to really kind of get a canvassing and for people who were sleeping outside or in their vehicles. There's another component, so we have some specialized counts, one of which is the youth and young adult count, that we just know that youth and young adults and then also some of the other specialized counts have populations that show up differently. They may not be, you know, easily available in our, in our general street count. And then we also really lean on our homeless service providers and our database, which is called HMS, Homeless Information Management System. It's where we track where people who are accessing homeless services and utilizing that to kind of get our shelter count. So we, when people are staying within shelter programming or transitional housing programs throughout King County, they are also considered homeless and are part of this full count. So we'll talk about two different components of that, the unsheltered count and then the sheltered count. And then with that, one of the things that was, is a part of the new methodology that we have, and I'll talk a little bit about some of those shifts, is around peer conducted surveys. So folks who have experienced homelessness or have been recently housed help us in the couple of weeks after the point or the night of the count to get more of that, what's going on, the stories behind it. Because as you may imagine, at 2:00 a.m., people are sleeping. We don't want to, you know, jeopardize anyone's safety, volunteers or people who might be resting and don't want to get startled. And so in that point in time, we're not asking folks a little bit about their situation, but then the weeks following that is the peer conducted surveys. So as far as the methodology goes, as indicated, there was a change in 2017 to move forward with ASR, which is a, an organization that has done a number of counts throughout the nation, and particularly on the West Coast cities, just to really kind of have these different methodologies around using census tracts and also having guides, folks that have experienced homelessness, that have maybe been in different parts of the city that can really say, hey, you know, when I was trying to not actually be counted into hide, I went around that corner or underneath that bridge. And so they're really taking out there and bringing folks and volunteers out to say, actually, this is a spot or these are the different indicators and signs that you need to look for. So there were over two hundred guides and in that process, you know, we really value that people are going to take their time and their expertise to compensate them. And so they're paid for their work in that. And as I mentioned, we kind of moved towards this canvassing of really having a hundred percent going through every single census tract within King County. And then, of course, I mentioned the specialized count. So some of those specialized counts included bus counts. We know that folks may take shelter in public transportation to stay warm, to kind of get some rest. Also, we have a team that goes out and does a vehicle count, which we'll, we'll talk about that later on as well. And then also talk about unsheltered families. So one of the things that we do know, as I mentioned before, is that different populations show up differently in their homelessness. And so we have to kind of account for those different things beyond purely our visual count. One of the things that I'd just like to mention, because we are in Auburn today and South King County in general, if you all have participated in the count, especially in these last couple years, you know that a lot of the land that you're surveying and going through is forest. It's dark, it's got a lot of land to cover, and a big part of that now is done in vehicles and that sort of thing. And one of the things that we have gotten feedback, we get better and better each year, but it's just the vastness of being able to get through some of those tracts. So as we talk about the data later on, I just want to acknowledge that we are getting better and better each year and learn from previous years, but there has been feedback that some of the tracts, especially in this area, are very extensive and sometimes, you know, you might miss somebody. And that is the case in all these things. But I mean to say that just to emphasize that this is always going to be an undercount, but it is a helpful trend data point. All right. Moving on to some of the results. So we could go, I was very fortunate to go after the Housing Development Consortium, great partners in that. They talked about lots of different tools and gave a really great landscape of things. So as I indicated, you know, just around the affordability crisis, we're really going to hone into the results of the people who have lost their housing and who are experiencing unsheltered and sheltered homelessness. So in this latest count, we had twelve thousand, one hundred and twelve folks that were identified either in unsheltered count or in the sheltered count, which again, that includes shelter, emergency shelter, and also our transitional housing programs. So I'm going to go ahead, I know that's a small slide with a lot of information in there. I'm going to break that down a little bit, some of the key points, but again, if there's a specific one I don't get to, please don't be shy in directing me back there. All right. One of the things that I really want to emphasize to start with is, is just where we did see some areas of improvement, that meaning where we saw decreases in homelessness and really the lifting up the key themes that come away from that. So we saw thirty-one percent decrease in veterans homelessness and a twenty-two percent decrease in youth homelessness. The reason we really wanted to lift these things up is because we had some very specific state and also local investments and very targeted strategies. So we are, this is really just to kind of help show that if we really put the resources behind this and if we really have the targeted strategies behind this and we really put, again, the resources to these professionals and our service provider consortiums that are really doing this hard work, we can see a difference. And so just wanted to indicate a couple of those areas that we can hopefully, again, replicate in different segments of the populations who are experiencing homelessness. One of the things that I heard mentioned in the last presentation and we certainly saw is in this last count, is that the landscape of where people are staying is shifting and changing. So we saw a forty-six percent increase in the number of people who were in vehicles and also a decrease in the number of people who were staying in tents. And so there's a number of reasons why that could be. I'm just, I wanted to start off by sharing that this was what that, again, this point in time that we saw that those differences were happening. And with that, knowing that, just as like those other targeted strategies, strategies shift and change a little bit too when you're talking about people who are concerned about where their vehicle is going to stay that night or that sort of thing versus unsheltered. So there's just different components there, but we recognize that people are people, we're shifting, and then also just what we are seeing has also been shifting in this latest count.
So you said you found forty-six percent increase of living in vehicles. Is that the whole South King County or is that the whole King County?
This is all of King County, yes. So that's all inclusive of that.
Do you have data breaking the cities and stuff like that?
You know, I'm going to get, actually, my next, great tee up for the next slide there. This is by region of King County, so it's not as specific as cities or zip codes. One of the things, the reasons why that is the case is that we recognize that people, people move, this, we have to really approach this as a regional, regional issue. One of the things is with, like, for example, even parking your car. Maybe one day you can park your car in one space, but you have to move it after seventy-two hours to another space. And recognizing that we're only getting a snapshot of a point in time, we really tried to have this be more in these different regions. And recognizing too, I know that there's probably many conversations going on of where different resources are, where people are connected to their natural supports. Those all play different factors of why people might move around. And so this is helpful data just to kind of get a sense of where are we seeing, again, it's one point, one night, so it kind of gives us a trend from year to year. But one of the things that I really wanted to highlight, especially for, you know, places like South King County that are so varied and fast, is that we need to supplement that information, right? And one of the other things I wanted to offer up is while these numbers are, appear to have gone down from the previous year, when you're just comparing side by side, when we look at some of our other resources and information that we get through HMS, as I mentioned, but also we have this process right now for families who access emergency shelter every day. So every day that a family is experiencing unsheltered homelessness, which includes staying in vehicles, calls into this line. And one of the greatest areas that we are seeing increases is in the South King County region. In fact, when you break out those numbers, over half of those folks are outside of the city of Seattle and from these different areas. And again, this is, this is data that kind of evolves and we see these different trends. But I just really want to emphasize, because I think sometimes we go for the tendency of saying, oh, we can just kind of draw some conclusions off of these. But it is one night, getting one picture, and it's helpful to kind of help build out that narrative. And really don't want to take away from the urgency of what the previous presenters were talking about, that this affordability crisis is now not just hitting that lowest zero to thirty percent AMI, but even higher than that. And we are certainly seeing that happen within the people who are accessing homeless services, where people have more and more income. In fact, some of the count data and information showed that nearly forty-five percent of folks identified having some form of job, and that is an all encompassing of all populations and yet, and oftentimes multiple jobs, and still weren't able to make that connection to housing. Any questions about that piece before I move on?
No, it's true. You just, you just said something I just heard here two weeks ago. A gentleman works at a dealer's shop and he can't afford a home. He lived in Kent, they raised his rent up. He had to get out, even though he makes thirteen dollars an hour, he still can't afford a home. So he's sharing a home with somebody in Seattle in a, in a studio apartment is what they're living in. And they're sharing the cost and he, he drives the, the bus to Auburn to work. So I, you know, you just said what they're doing.
No, and, and you know, that was coming to my mind in the previous presentation as well. I mean, right now, we really have to create creative and uncomfortable too, like the ability for someone, especially on fixed income, to be able to make, to make it in the private market, it's just not possible. And a lot of our homelessness service providers and strategies, working with people and households, are trying to figure out what are the best options for people that they have. And oftentimes, people are electing to live with other folks, whether it's roommate situations, whether it's subletting situations, to be able to make that possible so they have sufficient income to cover all of those costs. All right. One of the other count results that we see, and this is very consistent as well from every, year to year, when we do that survey data, so that's after the, the count, ninety-eight percent of survey respondents said if there was affordable housing for them to move into, they would take it. And eighty percent of the survey respondents indicated rental assistance as being one of those key things to ending their homelessness experience. So again, really wanting to emphasize, when we do survey data of over, you know, a thousand folks, this is what people are saying. And so the, the notion that people are not accepting services or whatnot, one of the biggest things that we just really try to push and be in line with our partners that were before us is we need additional housing. And we really need to utilize all those tools that the folks just spoke about in order to create more affordable options for people. So again, homelessness is not a choice. If people had the choice that it was something where they could move into, people are saying yes to that. The other piece that we find really critical to point out is that homelessness is not happening to all people at the same rates. When we look at our demographic data in particular, fifty-two percent of people experiencing homelessness identified as households of color. And when you break that down by particular populations, that, that percentage gets up much higher, especially for families, for example. And where, you know, in the general population, thirty-three percent of households identify as communities of color. And so we see continually the highest disparities amongst our American Indian, Alaska Native, and Black African American, and this year, Asian Pacific Islander folks that were experiencing homelessness. So one of the things that we as a COC also, you know, with all partners, have So one of the things that we as a COC also, you know, with all partners have really grappled with this in the last couple of years in particular, as we become more and more of a data-driven community and looking at how, how our programming is rather than looking at simply as blanketly, I'm trying to break that down and say, hmm, by different community, are we seeing success for, for some people more so than others? And how do we lift that all to 100% for everyone? So the goal of the homeless housing system is to house people, to resolve the crisis of homelessness. And if we see that that is working for some and not others as well, how do we learn from that? And so we really lift this up to say that we have, need to have targeted and pointed conversations and strategies to meet the different needs of different populations. All right. Onto my trend of supplementing with additional data. So one of the things here is just like what the data tells us, you know, so again, there's limitations to taking any one set, although this is a hugely beneficial thing to kind of help see that trend over time. In particular, we wanted to call out that, you know, systems, especially in, you know, the United States have systematically excluded some and benefited others. And so we know that for those that have been systematically excluded in our history, continue to have some of that historical trauma into today. American Indian, Alaska Native being one of those populations, and so we really wanted to lift up another data set just to show the trend and experience of homelessness that Chief Seattle Club, in partnership with the Urban Indian Health Institute, which is kind of the branch, data branch of a lot of the American Indian, Alaska Native work that is going on within the Seattle and King County area, has lifted up to show just every year there's increases in the number of American Indian, Alaska Natives. And so we, we say this to really dive in to understand, like again, when we're doing kind of these big systematic landscapes and views, there are certain populations that we know we're going to miss more than others. And so there's a particular emphasis that we like to make sure to supplement as well. That way we're not making any one particular population invisible through the process. All right. What the data is telling us, every year, we are housing more people as we do systems transformation work, as we get more of an understanding through our data, as we really standardize the way that we do business and make decisions based off of what's working and what's not working. An example of that, pure numbers, in 2013, our homeless housing system in a full year reported 3,410 families exited the homeless housing system into permanent housing through that assistance. In 2017, that went up 100%, so 6,851. And while we have had increases in resources, we have not doubled our increases, our housing resources, it means that we're getting efficient, more efficient and better at that work, but regardless of all that, and on top of it, that's with an increase in, you know, or a decrease in affordability and increase in rents, but regardless of all that, the number of people who are flowing into homelessness, experiencing homelessness every month continues to outpace that learning. And so really just, if you haven't gotten the theme of the night, really the need for affordable housing and especially for that 0 to 30% AMI group, to really target those folks for, for this. All right. And that takes me to the end, just a very high level view. We have the full report and you can dive into all those pages of the findings from the count on our website at allhomekc.org. And you can also go back to see previous reports as well if that is of interest to you, but I just want to thank you again and open it up for any questions you might have.
Does anyone have any questions? No? Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Great report.
Yes. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thanks.
Okay. Homeless Task Force update.
Okay. Well, let's see. I think in the interest of time and much of this information you saw earlier tonight or were already aware of, so I won't go too deep into pretty much the first half of, of the slides, but this essentially is the PowerPoint that we presented to the homeless task force. Mayor Backus convened the task force back in June and we wanted to bring everyone together for two purposes. One, so they can see the progress that we have made on the action plan that came out of that task force. And two, to hear what they were doing and what they are seeing on the streets. And I guess a third thing as well to talk about what that task force is going to look like in the future. It's clear that the work is not done and we all want to make sure that we have robust community support and champions in our community and that we are cohesive in our response and that not only do people have an understanding of what's going on in the region, but even just right here within our borders and making sure that our service providers and local government and churches and whoever else wants to roll up their sleeves and do the work has an awareness of what's going on and how they can help. And hopefully we'll continue to drive down those numbers that you have seen today, which can kind of seem overwhelming and a little bit depressing, but I can tell you that there is no one that I'm seeing here in the city or in the region that has any intention of giving up anytime soon. We know the work has to be done. So, real quickly, just to review that the process was simply to bring together a broad base of people that have an interest in Auburn, they may not live here, but they have a business here, they are a service provider or the head of one of our organizations, first responders, city staff, and wanted to come together and look at what we were doing. This was back in 2015. And as we saw really the urgency around the issue and the population growing and what were we going to do as a community to address it. The process overall, we did have a facilitator, her name is Karen Reed. She is, has done this process in several cities around the county already and, and it's, it's a very defined process, which, which we really appreciated is that she, she took the group through a very strategic method to get to the end result instead of just kind of sitting around, well, what do you all think and writing down some things? So they had a criteria for the recommendations and these are the four criterias that were required. It had to be actionable, it had to have a positive community impact, be consistent with federal law and sustainable. There's a lot of ideas that get thrown out there that may not fall into one or many of these things and essentially we wanted to have things that come out of the task force that, that were real and that we could, could actually take action on. And in order for those items that came through, if they met those four criteria, then there was a broad-based discussion, education, and it needed an 80% approval from the group. There's about 20 people on the group in order to recommend the action, 60 to 79% approval to say it was a consensus and less than 60%, not recommended, but it's on the list. They're not necessarily bad ideas, but the group felt that they wanted to prioritize the actions to, to help us as we move forward. At the end, they came through with 46 recommendations, 15 priority recommendations, that's that 80% consensus in the group, and they fell into seven categories of activity. And then this is the part that you've heard, so I apologize, but this is the things that we were just talking about. Look at those, some very familiar things that you've already seen. So we did present to the group much of what you saw tonight from the, our guests here. And then we just went in and let, let them know how we did on those, on the action plan that has been set before us. So one of the priority recommendations that fell into the improving public safety and sense of well-being category, and I did kind of fly through this, I'm sorry if you feverishly flipping through your pages to catch up with me. Come on. Let's go. And last on the list.
Nations Grasshopper.
I know. One priority was to create a program where homeless are hired daily to help clean the community. We're exploring that opportunity as something that we, we could take on possibly as a city. You've probably seen the Albuquerque model, the mayor of Albuquerque several years ago went ahead and started something similar. We can tell you that that is something that's essentially going on at the Ray of Hope right now. Debbie Christian has a philosophy, which she was not shy about sharing with the group, that if I'm doing something for you, you're going to do something for me. And...
Mr. Pelosi?
Yes. I want to comment again, I commented about this a few weeks ago and I was talking to my wife about it yesterday. You don't see carts being pushed around downtown. You don't see it. And so therefore, the Ray of Hope is working. It really is working and that's a real plus for our community.
Thank you. Thank you for saying that. And I believe the last time you said that, I immediately went upstairs and sent off an email to Debbie Christian and Lorian at Valley Cities that, that the work is being recognized and is having positive impact. Needs a lot.
And the work with PD as well.
Yeah. Don't forget Bill and his crew out there taking care of it.
That goes without saying there.
Right. But what it has done as well is it's helped us answer that question, especially with law enforcement of if they are trespassing an individual, we didn't have an answer to, where am I going to go now? Now at least we do have some place where they can go and get help and maybe get on a positive track. So the, but again, Debbie Christian, she does have them out there working. She loves to post it on Facebook. They went out and bought those neon colored vests and had Ray of Hope put out on the back. They went, volunteered to go clean up Brandon Park before our community picnic out there. They did some cleanup along the river. They'll do cleanup just around the site itself on the Valley Cities campus because they understand that it's, it's meaningful and they want to make sure that they're, you know, they're earning their keep to a degree. And there has been some specific fundraising done by the food bank that's specifically for Ray of Hope and it might mean getting a $5 gas card if you have a car. It might mean getting $5 or $10 to go buy some, some food later, things like that. They realized that gift cards were not the best idea sometimes because the purchase choices weren't in line with, so a specific card maybe too, might be a fast food restaurant, something like that. It's not the best in the world, but it does achieve the end goal.
One other comment on Ray of Hope. It appears that the neighborhood around that general area are feeling more comfortable now?
Very much so. You know, and the large concern was the middle school, Cascade Middle School, and, and they jumped right on board. The, the leadership club there took up a sock donation and donated socks. They were doing coffee and hot cocoa in the wintertime and, and really just, just embraced the, the entire program to show. And honestly, very few complaints to tell you the truth. And when they do come in, you all know what Debbie Christian's going to do. She's going to address it head on and she has. And then ensuring police have information to provide service and shelter and referrals, that is essentially done. Our officers, our patrol officers all carry information as a resource so that, that people can move into a better situation than they are perhaps being found in. And, and again, you know, to the mayor's point, kudos to our, our police officers and how they are offered the latitude to have it not always be something that ends up in an, in an arrest. The other of those seven kind of areas of recommendation, the expansion of emergency shelter options, again, you can see there, and all, all we did was just simply list the recommendation and give some sort of progress. And you can see additional sheltering that is done, expanding, expanding shelter services to youth under 18, that is available, but more is needed. The King County did offer Nexus, about a half a billion dollars last year to reopen the Skies facility. It's small, it's 12 beds, but it's, it's beds that really, there's no, literally no under 18 sheltering in King County. So more, much more is definitely needed when we know we have, as of last year's count, about 300 homeless.
Did you raise your hand?
The Auburn School District reports about 300 homeless in, in last year's numbers. So, you know, it's, it's something that's definitely needed. Increasing the supply of low barrier shelter beds, that of course is in progress. Ray of Hope is, 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 or the sundown, I should say. We do, they are probably averaging somewhere in the 40s, probably 40 or so a night over at Valley City. And that is a low barrier shelter, again, staffed and with the philosophy of Debbie Christian of...
So on, in this winter, when winter comes and the shelter's full, are they going to be opening up the, that little shelter at the...
At the park? I don't know. We're going to explore that. We certainly do not want to leave people out there. We have, we're thinking about it. If it does come available, we'll, or if it does come needed, we'll see if we, we can make that available.
And have the churches shown any entrance, interest?
We have a lot of interest in the churches and the one thing where we, the, the desires amongst the different churches are varied. There's, there's differing capacity depending on the church and what they, they can and can't do. The ask is out there, they're very willing. I'd probably say the most active church would probably be Messiah Lutheran Church with their services.
Mr., Mr. Backus?
Thank you. Dana, do you have any idea on an average as to how many people are taking advantage of the day shelter and the night shelters?
I did get a request from Robert Whale for that number two. So those, I don't know that exactly off the top of my head. The overnighting number I do know is, is somewhere in the 40s. And as far as what is coming through the, the day shelter, I, I don't want to release an inaccurate number, but I do know that it is, is well utilized. Let's say that.
Yeah, living right down the street and passing by it during different parts of the day and evening hours. I do know that the day shelter is being used extensively. There's a lot of people outside the shelter as well as inside, I'm sure, but I just was kind of curious to see how well that day shelter is working.
It is working well. I think they're probably coming up on maybe hitting double digits on, on finding housing for people. I think the last Debbie said, I think they've housed eight people overall and, and that's pretty amazing for that short of time. It's because it's, it's certainly not easy, as we all know. And it, just the other services that are available there and those connections is, has been very useful.
And are they finally taking, feeling, putting a data put together on where the people are coming from and this and that? Because I know here, not very long ago, they didn't have...
We did, so we completed our project. We made some staff time available too, because they were just doing the handwritten intake forms. We had the intake form sent over here. We had some staff input just onto a spreadsheet that, that mimics the HMIS system, shipped that back over to them. And so I said, hey, give us more. And they have, now have direct access to the HMIS system, so they're doing all of their intakes online. So, yes, it is getting it. The hygiene center, that is available over at Valley Cities. They do have access to it, I believe, two days a week, as well as laundry facilities. Using the laundry facility at Valley Cities proved to be just a little bit too much for, for their, their washers and dryers to take. So there is a local laundromat that closes down almost for an entire day so that Ray of Hope folks can come over and get their laundry done. So that's happening as well. And then of course, expansion of programs and facilities in behavioral health, that also is in progress as, as you all know. The next recommendation category was to expand permanent housing and related service capacity. You can see that we're exploring or have some things in progress around that issue. You, you just heard how permanent housing is extremely difficult, especially coming off the streets into permanent housing is a, it's a big leap and it requires a lot. And I would say number nine is something that we will, you will start seeing some things from us on some legislative things that we may be making asks of the city council to consider, to maybe put some of those tools in place that the HDC is recommending. Improving public understanding, that's an ongoing process. I have to again, give credit to Debbie and her staff. They're doing a really good job of, of... They're doing a really good job of highlighting the positive things that are going on at Ray of Hope. You know, when you see, when you see the clients in their vests with a big smile on their face, with two big, you know, garbage sacks full that they were able to be a part of, it's, you know, it is, it just kind of drives into the community embracing the effort. You know, as Councilmember Pelosi was just mentioning, that as, we can kind of break down just those barriers in education. So, we're going to keep doing that as well. The next area was around advocacy. Again, these are things that we all have been doing. It's more than just asking people for help, but it's the advocacy that you all are doing on a day-to-day basis, especially at the legislative level, whether you're in Olympia or DC, or working with others, that has to be ongoing. And we have to just make sure that Auburn's name continues to stay in the hearts and minds of those that can help us. I know that Mayor Backus has had some very positive conversations with Senator Fain lately, Councilmember Trout, and Councilmember DeCoursey with some of our state senators and representatives. And I cannot say enough how much that just needs to continue. And there is legislation that needs to happen at a higher level to address these things, and there's money, to be quite honest with you. You know, and we need to, we need to do our part to fight for those dollars that the state and federal government has made available.
Dana, last week, I can't remember who sent it to us, showing what funding the state was providing.
That was from Commerce. That was the state, and there's about 32 behavioral health beds that are going to be funded here. You know, subsidizing different local programs already, and, you know, that's 32 that we didn't have before. So, those should open, I think, in 2019, I think, is what that...
I forwarded that to all of council.
Right. So, just keep it up. Get all the dollars. That's, sometimes, is what it comes down to. And then, there was just the other category, was just to create best-practice training for systems, to build connections. And I think that really goes back, really, to the fundamental reason why we wanted to put the task force together and keep the task force together, because sometimes, it is that coordination, and you may have a well-meaning, well-hearted nonprofit over here tackling the solution, and you might have a well-meaning, you know, church over here, and they're doing the exact same thing. So, maybe if we can help those people join forces or realize that there might be a better way to go after something, we want to make sure that those conversations continue to take place in our community. And I think that was a bit, that was about it. Yeah, and then, we went on to the task force member updates, and they had some good things to share with us. We had some staff here. It's always good for everyone to have interaction with our staff, especially with law enforcement and code enforcement, especially in our Parks Department, where, you know, we see impacts as the city side. We always want to make sure we're taking care of the human side as well. So, we did have a very large encampment cleanup. We found about seven encampments, give or take, in the Auburn Environmental Park. And Josh Arndt from our staff in economic development typically leads those, just is kind of, leads the encampment cleanup, so when we find them. And then, we have police, code enforcement, and then, we do outreach to our nonprofits to come out as well, so that as we're cleaning that up, we're also ensuring that, you know, we're not making the problem worse, but offering services for people to go...
Mr. Pelosi?
You know, talking about the environmental park, I was down there this weekend at the, off of Main Street. And that vegetation has grown up so high, that it's, to me, it's not good.
It has shown to be a bit of a hiding place, but we also know that there's a lot of mosquitoes back there, because Debbie Christian showed up in short pants and indicated, yes, and at last count, she had 37 mosquito bites. So, our staff is making sure she wears better clothes.
So, is there any, is there any plan to prune that area at all?
I don't know. I can double-check with staff about how kind of the maintenance and what the...
Is that the Parks Department responsibility?
Yes.
Yeah. You know, he's right. I hadn't been over in that area for a while, and I drove by, and I go, "Holy moly, that's, you know, really tall."
It's a real jungle.
Well, remember, though, it is the environmental park, and some of those, some of those native plantings were...
I know, Mayor, but bird watching.
The native plantings were done intentionally, and that's what that was supposed to be for. But, you know, they'll maintain around the bird tower and those types of things, but the rest of it's supposed to be natural vegetation.
We didn't foresee that it was going to be used as an encampment place.
Well, we have had an eye on it. There was, they found, typically, where they find large encampments, they'll make sure to go back to make sure it doesn't crop up. And there's, I can think of probably three or four areas around the city where there is a tendency for the encampments to get larger. One actually is, it's actually owned by the Port of Seattle, and it got really bad, but the port was fantastic. And once it came to light, and they have been wonderful to work with and working with our staff, especially police, to clear out the encampments, and then, they actually put up some fencing to make it a little bit more difficult for that thing to crop up again.
Thank you. Any questions? Any further questions? No?
Thank you.
Thanks, Dana. Good report.
Thanks, Dana. Good information.
Thank you.
Keep up the good work.
Okay, back to Mr. Baggett.
Thank you.
Deputy...
Councilmember Troutman. Okay, other discussion items, I don't know that we have any right now, any new business. Looking at the matrix again, again, we still have some TBDs and some items that don't have dates in there. And I think some of these we've put off until future periods. Looking at the Health and Human Services, I think we have a couple of voids in there.
Yeah, I saw that, so I need to sit down and talk to Ms. Hinman about that, because I hadn't talked to her about those two items that's on there.
So, we're still TBD?
Yes. Mm-hmm. Until we meet again. The multi-care behavioral health. We just had a meeting, and that wasn't brought up, and also, the one-table presentation.
So, the multi-care behavioral health, there won't be any updates for a while, because you just had one, and it'll probably be this fall before the next one. And the one-table presentation, the final meeting for one-table was supposed to be July 31st. That's probably going to be pushed out, because that is the same day as Officer Moreno's memorial. So, I told him that I will not be at any type of meetings that day, because that day is dedicated to Moreno.
What time is that memorial, just to speak of?
I believe it's at 1:00 PM at Showware. So, that one will need to remain as a TBD for final presentation.
Municipal services, I think we've got a TBD there. Any word on that?
Director Martinson, I have not spoke to, so...
So, I believe we put a date in there for September today for Community Court, September 10th.
Okay. Got it. Thank you. Finance and economic development, we have still a TBD there. Any word on that, Councilmember Brown?
Let's see here. I have not talked to Mr. Holman about this yet.
If I may, I had a brief conversation with him, and we were supposed to follow up when he has some time on his specific concerns, see if I can ensure that we will talk to the boundary review board.
Are there any new items that we need to add to the matrix at this time? Councilmember DeCoursey?
Councilwoman Troutman and I were just discussing briefly. She mentioned in discussions tonight about abandoned housing. Just wondering if it's possible we can get some sort of a presentation on the impact and what we see for, given the number of abandoned housing units within the city.
And I talked to Jeff Tate, because that falls under his department, and he said he'd be willing to get the code enforcer to come and give a presentation.
He had a good presentation code enforcer for, I think, just to give us a nice update briefing. I'll see here, it would be helpful.
I'll check in with Jeff.
And I'm still, I'm still, Dana and I talked about having Dave Martin on domestic violence come in and give his presentation, and she says they're going to work with Chief Pearson and get both of them to get together and do a presentation together.
On DB, huh?
On DB.
I think they're working with...
Steve?
Right. The chief and I had a good conversation with Mr. Martin, and we're going to be reviewing prosecutors' offices and the police department policies to see what we're already doing. So, more to follow on that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
And I also, I think I'll talk to you about Mary's House, if there's any update on...
Mary's Place?
Mary's Place, yeah. Mary's Place. We haven't heard anything for quite a while on that, and so...
On Mary's Place?
That we have here in Auburn.
You're talking about the home that we have on Ninth Street?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
What is it that you're looking to...
Just the update on how it's going, and, you know, there's the...
So, Mary's Place does have a family living in the home right now?
That's what I, I wasn't sure if I could say that.
Yeah. No, they're, well, of course, Mary's Place does have a family living in there now. We try to be rather private about the rest of it, but Mary's Place does have a family residing there.
Okay. Just want an update. We haven't heard anything on it, or...
That's probably as much as we'll be able to provide you right now.
Okay. All right. Good to answer my question then. Thank you.
You bet.
If there's nothing more before the council, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.